Recognize the changes.
I did make the changes at four forty-eight, so it should be.
Okay. All right, it's minimized on the bottom.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight for the regular meeting of the Madera City Council, Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six oh one P. M.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three, enter ID eight two nine three six five three five nine four two pound. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at two zero five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. With that, I'll call this meeting to order.
And now for roll call, Mayor Gallegos.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montez. Absent, Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas.
Here.
Thank you for that. I don't see our pastor Haas here tonight, so I will ask Councilwoman Evans to give the invocation if everybody could please stand.
Jesus is the reason for the season, and we're all here tonight to come in fellowship, even though this is a city that we stand in. The board says, "In God we trust." I ask that each and every one of you remove all of the obstacles that you hold by your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for this day. Thank you for watching over and keeping us. Thank you for this city and for this congregation. Thank you for the mayor and this council, for the workers, and for each and every one of you that are here tonight. Father, we ask to move self out of the way and allow you to enter into this room, to allow the words that we speak to be your words and not ours. Continue to cover this, this city. Cover our country because we're in utter turmoil. We call upon you now, Father. We give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. With that, keep standing for the Pleasant Legions. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, evergreen, and all.
Thank you, everyone. Let the record show that Councilmember Steve Montez has arrived. And with that, I will move on to approval of the agenda. If any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? If not, I would entertain if they would be willing to move D four following the consent calendar.
I will move to approve the agenda with item D four moving up after the consent calendar. Again.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you for that. We have a presentation from General Manager Gershey from M. I. D. If he'd like to come on up. It came fast. He's here to give us some information and learn more about Madera Irrigation District. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanking, thank you for letting me sneak in here at the beginning of your agenda. It looks like you have a full one tonight, so I will be brief. I'm here to just reintroduce myself to you. I'm the General Manager of Madera Irrigation District and also the Irrigation District. As a reminder, about ninety percent of the city of Madera is actually in the Madera Irrigation District. There's also questions of why that is. The water that Madera Irrigation manages manages, the surface water that we import into this area and recharge into the offer supports the city of Madera's groundwater supply. The city relies a hundred percent on groundwater, so without the support of the Irrigation District, we wouldn't be able to have a solid supply for the city. So we work hand in hand. I also want to take an opportunity to recognize your staff. Two thousand and twenty-three was an amazing year for water. And the leadership of your city manager, Arnaldo, pushing not only his staff but our staff to maximize the partnership in the basins within the city. We actually recharged over seventeen hundred acre feet in two thousand and twenty-three alone. Pretty amazing. The city is continuing to expand those abilities. We're looking at new development projects. We're looking at connecting new basins. And every chance we get, we push more water in those basins. Recently, we connected one of the water hazards at the golf course that was ready to go for two thousand and twenty-three. And as I say, it did impact some handicaps, but we did put more water in the ground than otherwise wouldn't have. So that basin alone was a couple hundred acre feet of water that hadn't been in years past. So congratulations. Also want to quickly recognize your police department for assisting us with the homeless populations that like to set up in our facilities, especially when there isn't water in them. There's been a great partnership there, not only Fresno River, but all of the facilities working with us to help control that. So we, we've been looking for ways to do outreach. And in today's world, it's media, it's the social media stuff, it's videos. So recently, we prepared, which we thought was going to be a fairly easy task. It's more challenging than we ever expected, but we put together a video. And what it is, it's a high level video of just what the district does, who we are, and tells you a little bit about the district. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring that in to the city. Not only to share with you, with the council, but also the public. And we have that ready. If we could, if you'd help play that, and we'll also be available for any questions afterwards.
Madera Irrigation District. We manage the most critical of all resources, water. From the headwaters located deep in the Sierra Nevada mountains to the community of Madera, Madera Irrigation District protects and oversees this vital resource. More than a century ago, Madera Irrigation District's originators had the foresight to know that farming in Madera would require supplemental water from the Sierra Nevada mountains. But what they didn't know is what a challenge water and water rights would continue to be even into the twenty-first century. From managing and operating historic mountain facilities, dams, canal systems, and delivery at a landowner's turnout, Madera Irrigation's water and responsibilities travel great distances. Madera Irrigation District was established in nineteen twenty. Working alongside the federal government, the district began helping San Joaquin Valley farmers gain access to water supplies. In nineteen fifty, it expanded with the purchase of the Madera Canal and Irrigation Company, acquiring historic canals and some of the state's oldest water rights dating back to the late eighteen hundreds. Madera Irrigation District works daily to protect these valuable rights and contracts for its landowners. The district is large, approximately one hundred and forty thousand acres in size. Madera Irrigation District operates as a public agency governed by a five-member Board of Directors. The district also has contracts with the federal government through the United States Bureau of Reclamation for a portion of its water supply. The water's availability is determined by three main factors. These are, number one, Mother Nature. Number two, the district's contracts with the Bureau of Reclamation and other agencies. And number three, environmental regulations. As water demands and availability fluctuate, Madera Irrigation District is doing irreplaceable work to grow an agriculturally rich economy while enhancing groundwater supply for future generations. The district continues to expand its surface water deliveries and groundwater recharge efforts. And a groundwater sustainability plan is underway to bring the area's groundwater into sustainable balance by two thousand and forty. We all rely on water for our daily lives, from showering to consuming food. Water is the most critical managed resource, and Madera Irrigation District hits prime in managing this resource. It is because of Madera Irrigation District's persistent work and progress that farmers and residents in Madera can look to history, reflecting on the foundation that was laid for water rights, and look to the future with hope for a sustainable community and a prosperous agricultural economy. Visit us at madera-id.org. Madera Irrig-
I got it. So in that video, you saw a lot of our facilities. You saw some of our new recharged basins, some large spreading facilities. Those were active agriculture lands that we purchased as a district, took out of production, and now are spreading fields. So that's a significant effort and monetary investment that the district has made. So you also saw a lot of the city of Madera in that video, right? Because that is the heart of our district, and it's very important, that water supply that we preserve for the city. You also saw some history, the late eighteen hundreds, those facilities. There was, I don't know if you noticed, but a gate on the side of a mountain there in granite. That's from the late eighteen hundreds, and we still use it today. So we like to share this. I'm happy to be here. I also want to offer to any of you, if you ever want to come in the district and get a little more into the weeds, I'm happy to have you over and we can, we can sit down and talk about what we're doing on groundwater management components, surface water, everything else that we're dealing with these days. So. Want to thank you for your time. Wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And again, anytime you guys want additional information, please, please reach out.
Thank you.
Do my colleagues have any questions? Oh, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for showing a very beautiful video of Madera. Will it be made available in Spanish?
Ooh, good question. I think we can probably do that. I like that recommendation. Yeah, it is on our online, available online, but yeah, currently we haven't translated it over. That's a great idea, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my fellow council members? I don't see any. Thank you, General Manager Gracie. We appreciate your time and your partnership with the city of Madera, and we look forward to do more projects with you in the upcoming years.
Absolutely. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll be moving into public comment.
The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and noted verse conclusions shall, should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. It's time I open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? With that, I see none. City Clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Come on up.
So this regards to item A, A one.
Okay, sir, we'll take public comment when A one comes.
Okay.
Anything that's not on the agenda at this time.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? I see no one else in the audience. I will close public comment at this time. Do we have another public comment? No? Okay. Thank you. With that, we will be moving on. Next item, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Moving on. Moving on to public hearings, item A one, ordinance text amendment for the, text amendment, OTA two thousand and twenty-four dash zero two for the, for the amendment of chapter three of Title X, planning and zoning of the city municipal code.
Thank you for that. And we have our Community Development Director, Will Taggett, and a contract planner, Mr. S. I'll say, because you can pronounce your name for the rest of us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez, Councilmembers, Will Taggett, Community Development Director, City of Madera. Want to present to you this evening Wyatt Shazinski, our contract planner and consultant on this item. He'll present, and then we'll be available to field any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Wyatt Shazinski, Contract Staff Planner with Provo and Pritchard. Before you tonight is ordinance text amendment twenty-four oh two that is proposed by the city of Madera. Ordinance twenty-four oh two has been proposed in order for the city to implement programs of its six-cycle housing element. The city's housing element is one of the eight mandated elements of the city's general plan, and it's required to be updated every eight years. The city is currently within its six cycle, which runs from this year until two thousand and thirty-two. And it includes programs that have been developed to implement the provisions of the housing element to align with state law. Generally, in aligning with state law, the zoning text amendment would streamline housing production and remove barriers for overall production of housing within the city. As proposed, the zoning text amendment would add or clarify procedures, definitions, and use regulations for housing-related uses within the city's zone districts. In regard to CEQA for the proposed text amendment, it would fall under the common sense exemption, which is CEQA Guideline Section one five zero six one B three. What this exemption says is if a project would not have any conceivable way to have a significant impact on the environment, then it does not qualify for environmental review under CEQA. There are several changes to the zoning ordinance that are proposed under the zoning text amendments. The first of those changes are to procedures. The first procedure that we'll be changing are reasonable accommodations. The text amendment would simply update the zoning ordinance language for reasonable accommodations so that it aligns with state law. The second procedure that has been added is the administrative plan review. What this procedure does is sets up a ministerial approval process, which is required by state law for certain uses, and will align the city's zoning ordinance with state law. The next change that has been proposed for the zoning ordinance is to accessory dwelling units. Overall, the ADU provisions of the zoning code have been revised to align with state law with a couple of exceptions where it's been proposed to be less restrictive. Under Senate Bill twelve eleven, that will come online on January first of next year, the Senate bill provides that existing multifamily developments may have up to eight detached ADUs. The city is proposing that under the zoning amendments, both existing and proposed developments would be allowed to have up to eight detached ADUs. However, it's restricted to have one for each primary unit within the development. Additionally, in regard to ADUs, the city has developed ADU bonus provisions. Currently, state law allows for single-family residences to provide one junior ADU, one attached ADU, and one detached ADU. Under the zoning text amendments, the city would incentivize development by allowing bonus ADUs. Essentially, for each deed-restricted ADU, whether it be attached or detached, a single-family residence would then be allowed an additional ADU. If two deed-restricted ADUs are provided in the development, then the single-family residence would be allowed to build another bonus ADU so long as it meets certain accessibility requirements. The maximum number of primary being the single-family residence and accessory dwelling units on a lot zoned for single-family residential uses shall be capped at eight. And in summary, the city sees granting bonus ADUs as an innovative way to encourage housing production, specifically for senior housing, and also to potentially lower housing costs within the city. The next change occurred for density bonus and definitions within the zoning code. What we've done under the zoning text amendment is simply update the density bonus standards that the city already has to come into compliance with current state law. And then the definitions listed on the screen were either amended or clarified to come in line with state law. Next, there were some changes to the allowed uses within the city's zoning districts. Generally, the allowed uses seen on the screen were added as a, as a result of requirements of state law. So these changes are, again, just the city complying with what it's required to do under state law. There were some changes that have been proposed that are not required by state law. The first of those is the removal of the zoning administrator role and the assignment of those duties to the planning director. Next, procedures for the amendment to previously approved permits was added. Language regarding interpretation was expanded upon within the zoning code. The general plan amendment process was codified. While the city has that process now, it doesn't currently live within the zoning code, so we've added it. And then finally, other changes that were just made on the basis of clarifying language or processes to limit, to eliminate redundancies within the zoning code were added. The Planning Commission did recommend that the city council approve the zoning text amendments at their December tenth meeting. And at this time, staff is recommending that the city council waive the full reading and introduce an ordinance of the city council finding that the project is exempt from CEQA Guideline Section one five zero six one B three and amending chapter three of Title X of the city's municipal code. Alternatively, you may move to refer the item back to staff or continue the public hearing to a future city council date at a time certain with direction to staff to return with an updated report. Or you may move to deny, deny the request or provide staff with other alternatives for the, the project. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Do my colleagues have any questions at this time? Council Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. So, you know, I just want to clarify, because it's, I'm trying to put this in my head and wrap my head around that. When you talk about a single-family residential lot, are we saying that we can go up to eight units? Forgive me, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly.
You would be allowed the single-family residence, so the primary unit, the, the main home, and then up to an additional seven accessory dwelling units, whether it be junior ADUs, attached or detached ADUs. The single-family residence, the lot would still be required to meet all of the required development standards for all of those units to fit within the lot. So. A given lot may be only, may only be able to get up to five ADUs. It may be able to get up to the full seven additional ADUs. It'll have to comply with the objective standards.
Got it. I know that years back, the state had mandated some new regulations and policies regarding ADUs, but we had some restrictions here at our city, and now we're waiving that. We're asking that we comply with the state.
Councilmember Rodriguez, to clarify on your question, the current state law mandates that cities allow for one detached ADU, one attached ADU, and one junior ADU in addition to a primary unit. So we're updating our code to comply with state law. What we're also proposing in addition, that properties be, have the potential to develop those bonus ADUs, but that's contingent upon a deed restriction for affordability. So they would have to deed restrict those units to be affordable at a certain income level for thirty-five, fifty years. Because we don't see those, we actually haven't, say this, we haven't built an affordable unit here in the last three years. We have one application in process currently. So what we're trying to do is we're mimicking what other municipalities have adopted to incentivize deed-restricted units to ensure that affordability over the long term. But where other cities that we borrowed from did not put a cap on that, we're saying we're going to cap it at eighty units.
Good. And last question, density regarding these specific lots. I mean, I'm assuming that, does that play any part into that when we're talking about density?
ADU units under state law do not contribute to the density. So any standard conventional residential project, yes, we're going to require compliance and consistency with the land use designation and the respective density ranges within the general plan. But when we're talking about ADUs, those don't factor.
Help me find them this year. So if I'm hearing you correctly, we can have a small lot, maybe between three to five thousand square feet. How do you fit eight ADUs there? I'm not saying that that's the case. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. I mean, just to meet the density requirements from the state.
To the point Mr. Shazinski made, you still have to comply with development standards. So not every lot is going to be able. We're just saying, if you have the land area per unit, yes, you can build up to that many.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez.
I didn't want to butcher the name, Mr. Shazinski, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Councilmember Montez.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of switch to one of the changes that are not being required. Yeah, I wanted to kind of switch to one of the changes that are not being required, so procedures for amendments to previously approved permits. Can you give me an example of when that would apply? I mean, I know you have the, in the staff report, you have language in there, but I'm just trying to wrap my head again around like when that would apply, when it would need to reapply or have other type of approval.
Those procedures would apply in the instance we have a previously approved entitlement for development and a revision is subsequently proposed to that entitlement. So currently, our fee schedule does not reflect that except to give us the ability to collect a percentage of the regular fee. But otherwise, there are no procedures for amendments. There are only procedures for what we would consider a brand-new or new entitlement.
Okay, so at staff level, they're not able to change any of those conditions. It's just setting the procedure for when they would need to come.
That's correct, and those rules give deference to the either noticing or review authority requirements of the original entitlement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. How would residential parking or public parking, the plan, what would be the plan for that if up to eight dwellings would be allowed on a lot?
Under state law, parking is required for accessory dwelling units. It does not necessarily have to be covered. The state does provide exceptions when a property is within a half mile of a public transit stop, which meets the state definition of a major transit stop. We're talking about 15-minute headways. We have none of those in the city of Madera. So you will also notice in staff's proposal that we're trying to provide the same incentive based upon the same proximity, but to public transit without having to have the qualifier of meeting those 15-minute headways.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, so in speaking in layman's terms, you're basically saying that we can have the initial home, and if people have, say, a trailer or a manufactured home, they can put up to seven on a piece of property behind the home, the initial home, correct?
Assuming that you qualify for those sevens based upon deed restrictions, yes. Without the deed restrictions, up to four, including the primary. So it'd be three accessory dwelling units, one of them being a junior ADU limited to 500 square feet in size, attached to the primary.
Okay, so that would even also include the new tiny homes that people are building at this point in time.
Correct. It would include manufactured homes, tiny homes, understanding that those would have to be on a permanent foundation and connected to city services.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, sometimes we speak in terms that maybe everyone else doesn't understand. So as opposed to us continuing to using the acronyms, I just wanted to break it down for individuals to understand that if you have a family and there's a number of you, you can actually either build or bring in a trailer or a manufactured home or something of that nature and be able to have these individuals live on one piece of property, half acre, acre, whatever the case may be, correct?
That's correct.
As long as it fits in the requirements.
Correct. And with respect to trailers, so manufactured and mobile homes are allowed by state law. Anything on a trailer has to meet certain requirements licensed by DMV, and that's a new order.
Okay, thank you so very much. Thank you for your presentation as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. At this time, I'd like to open up to public comment.
Good evening, councilmembers. Do I have to state my address? Okay. Thank you for being here. Congratulations, Mayor Gagels. I'm going to wing it because I forgot the paper, the presentation that I had brought out. So I'm an architect in Madera, and I've been working here for the last 20 years, so I'll try to explain, you know, basically what has happened over the last few years. So going back decades, the state has created a layer upon layer upon layer of regulation that unfortunately has stopped the development of housing, especially affordable housing. It hasn't slowed it down and hasn't stopped it, but unfortunately, it's just caused a lot of delays because every single regulation that we have to go through is like another bottleneck that we have to go through. And unfortunately, every project goes as fast as the slowest trickle. Based on the current laws that have passed over the last few years, I can, it's my opinion that the state has realized that it's made a mistake, and they're cutting all of those regulations in order to allow affordable housing and in some cases, just housing in general. So I know it sounds like a lot of units on an, you know, eight units that are being allowed on a single-family lot. Just to give you an example, I fit 14 units on a 7,500 square foot lot in Sacramento. This is three stories. It's not something that, you know, maybe Madera is ready for, but it is doable. But not, like Will Tackett said, not all properties are going to qualify for these eight units. So far, I've designed like seven or eight projects in Madera, and the most we're able to fit is three or four dwelling units. I designed a duplex that, you know, we're already in the process of getting approved as a standard plan. I tried to hurry up. Also, there's also a misconception that this is going to bring substandard housing. This is completely incorrect. You still have to comply with all of the city standards, design standards. So you have to comply with the setbacks, open space requirements, parking if necessary, and all the aesthetics. So in the project, in the 20-plus ADUs that I've designed in Madera, every single one has been better looking in design than the previous home that is there. And the projects that are going to benefit the most from these ADUs are going to be the deeper lots and bigger lots that are, you know, in the inner side of Madera. I just wanted to clarify that and ask you to please support it. ADUs and infill housing is the best way that you can grow without spending any more on infrastructure. Hopefully, you pass it. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Mr. Garcia. Any more comments, sir? Come on up.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, I know you're going to do a great job leading us for these coming years. I just want to tap onto what the other, Mr. Garcia said. You know, as a Maderian, as a citizen of this city, I see the struggle that the people has trying to find a place to live, right? That it's safe, that it's livable. And just like the architect said, you know, we try to provide, and I speak from a father's standpoint, from a citizen, a husband, we need to provide safe housing. Housing that is going to be safe for our kids, safe for our families, our generations to come. And I see, I'm a real estate agent as well, and I get calls all the time for people looking for a place to rent, right? And there's none. Why? Because supply is very low. We see houses being sold within two days, right? So we need to provide those options for people that are not ready to buy to rent an ADU, right? To have a safe place. And again, we're not going to, depending on the lot, how big, how small it is, we're not going to feed the max units on it, right? Because we still got to comply, we still got to go through all the safety regulations that we have and which I'm grateful to have, you know? We don't want to build just a shack and rent it out, right? And leaving it. We want to provide safe housing for our community and be able to support those generations that are in front of us. So I'll please ask you to approve this item. You know, we can help our community and we can be the leading example for the cities around us and as well, I don't know, maybe the nation, you know? Maybe we'll come in the news saying, hey, Madera is building affordable housing for the citizens, and it's possible. So I ask you that you please approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. My colleagues have any more comments? I will close public comment at this time. And Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last question, and this was brought by Councilwoman Mejia regarding the parking. And I think I get what you're saying there is, for these specific projects that require parking, you're saying that any transportation hubs that we have nearest that lot can potentially mitigate or offset the amount of stalls that are needed for parking when considering an approval?
Yes, that's correct, and we're looking from that in the standpoint that we're trying to incentivize the infill, right? Where we have those service stops and where we see the highest level of ridership as well from our income groups. So we're trying to cater specifically to those income classifications with those incentives.
And do we have an idea of to what extent that would mitigate like 50% of required stalls, three quarters of them, or all of them for that matter, if they fit that?
So following the state's guidance, if you have a property that's within a half mile of a major transit stop, that unit is exempt from additional parking requirements.
Other than what's required for the standard single-family?
That's correct, yes. The primary units would still be subject to the development standards of the municipal code.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. I think, like you said, the infill, I hate to use the word sprawl in development, but that's what's kind of taken place with us, is we're moving out in sprawling development where we have yet the majority of the services in areas where you have the most need transportation and services. So thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. And gentlemen, thank you for that report. Very knowledgeable. If you want some fun reading, there's 200 pages, so always go on our website and take a look at it. With that, City Attorney, can you read action for this ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. The action would be to move to wait for reading induced by title-only ordinance of the city council of the city of Madera, determining the project exempt percentage to Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA guidelines, and in chapter 3 of Title 10, Planning and Zoning of the City Municipal Code Regarding Housing-Related Definitions, Procedures, and Regulated Uses in Zone Districts that Allow Housing.
Thank you. With that, I'd like my colleagues to entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve item A1.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on.
Moving on to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. With that, I open up to public comment. I see none. Do we have any on Zoom or written?
We have none.
With that, I close public comment. My colleagues entertain a motion or anything they would like to pull.
To approve consent as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for that.
Moving on to petitions, bids, resolutions, and ordinances. Item D4, city council appointment to fill vacancy in Council District 1.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez.
One moment while I pull up my report. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, my report is on city council appointment to fill vacancy, fill the vacancy in Council District 1. On December 4, 2024, the city council voted to move forward with an appointment process to fill the District 1 vacancy created by the election of C.C. Gagels as mayor. Council also outlined expectations for the process, which included submission of a completed application, a brief presentation by each candidate, and participation in a question-and-answer session. The council identified Tim Rocha and Rohi Zachariah as potential appointees for the District 1 seat. Both candidates were provided with applications and given a submission deadline of Wednesday, December 11, December 11, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. The city received completed applications from both candidates by the deadline. The process for tonight's item is candidates will introduce themselves, explain why they are seeking to fill the seat, and once presentations, questions, and public comment have been concluded, council may proceed as follows. Deliberations, number two, motion and second to appoint one of the candidates. Number three, if the motion receives a majority vote, proceed to adopt a resolution appointing the candidate. And number four, should the motion fail to receive a majority vote, council may entertain another motion and proceed as outlined above. Repeat as necessary until a candidate receives majority vote. The financial impact for this item, there's no significant fiscal impact associated with filling the vacancy through an appointment, apart from the monthly stipend of $500 and the cost of health benefits should the appointed council member choose to receive them. Alternatively, the appointee may elect to receive $450 in lieu payment in place of health benefits. Should the council call for a special election, the estimated cost of holding a special election is projected to range between $35,000 and $40,000. Tonight's recommendation is to consider the applications for the city council District 1 seat, and after deliberation, adopt a resolution appointing a candidate to fill the vacancy or direct staff to prepare a resolution calling for a special election to fill the vacancy with the election to be held no later than Sunday, February 2, 2025, as required by applicable law. I will now turn it back over to council.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. With that, we are going to proceed with our interviews. First, we're going to have our candidates come up and share five minutes or less of a little bit about themselves. Before we start, I would really like to express my total concern for our council to move forward and pick somebody tonight so that we cannot have a vacant seat for another year. I hope that we will open our minds and listen to our two candidates fairly and look at the experience and what they'll bring to this council for us to move forward. With that, I'd like to call up Tim Rocha and Rohi Zachariah, and our city clerk will be doing a coin flip to see who will speak first. You want to come up to the podium?
For the record, there's a star side of the coin and there's a blue side of the coin. And if you would like to pick a side? Start? Okay. Hope I don't mess this up. Blue side. So Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, city council, and everybody else that's in the room. I want to begin by saying that Rohi is a great husband, loving father, and a great person. I have no issues with him, and just because somebody's your opponent doesn't make them your enemy. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share with you and who I am the Sam for. Time is precious, and I appreciate you spending yours with me. I understand the tough choices you face, and it's week in, week out, you guys make tough choices, and this one probably is no different. In the past two weeks, I've learned a lot. One key lesson was from a 16-year-old in a Sunday School class named Apolloz. And he talked about in 2 Corinthians 6:6, he says, "We don't prove ourselves by anything other than by how we love and how we love sincerely." And it's something I try to live by. When I moved to Madera 30 years ago, I helped create one of the first after-school programs on Adele Street, sponsored by United Way. I also worked with Parks Department running programs in areas like Lully Street and Knox Housing. Many said those were tough neighborhoods, but I saw kids in need of love, not toughness. Working at Valley Children's Hospital and especially with kids battling cancer taught me how fragile life is and how important it is just to love big because you don't realize how short life is. Teaching in Fresno Juvenile Detention Center for a year opened my eyes to the impact of circumstances on people's lives that everyone needs is love and compassion. Though through 25 years in education, I've learned that helping young people realize their potential is what brings me joy. I've never been a teacher that left at 3:15, and I've always been the guy who goes above and beyond. Christina and I made the decision to stay in Madera because we felt God places here. For 24 years, our vision together has been to make Madera a better place and love the children that we work with. Christina will oversee the opening of King Hussein School in 2025, and I believe it's no accident that she'll play such an important role in District 1. Raising a child with autism has taught me more about love than I could ever imagine. It's been a journey of understanding. It's been a journey of understanding and growth. I'm proud of my two daughters, smart, strong-willed, like their mom, with a great sense of humor, unlike me. My oldest daughter even advocated for a park north of the river over a few years ago, and now with Rancho Santa Fe Park opening, she says they should rename it after her. I've also loved my time running a small media consulting business in Madera and giving back to the community. Over the years, I've donated my time to causes that matter. I helped pass by running the social media and website for Measure K and Measure M, which are transforming Madera. I've served on the ADA Council, learned a lot, and loved it. And now as the president of Linkage Foundation, I've helped raise thousands of dollars, fund programs like Run Madera, and partners with Leos, helping pass out jackets to our most vulnerable children. I've served as president of the Valley PBS's, I currently serve as president of Valley PBS's cab board, where we build relationships across California. And I'm also treasurer of the Olive Foundation here in Madera, which rescues women who've been, and girls from sex trafficking, and offers them the love that they deserve. At Valley West Christian Center, when I'm on the board, we provide a safe place for anyone of any color or any background to worship and find community. I believe everything is good is built through relationships. Serving on the Madera County Workforce Investment Corporation Board, I've seen people get trained, find jobs, and change their lives. I've also served as the president of the Cowie Group, which supports over 1,000 teachers throughout the state, from San Diego to Oregon, that work to make sure that students have a safe place to work. When I joined these organizations, most of them were running pretty good, but a couple of them were dumpster fires, I'll just be honest with you about it. And we were facing challenges. But today, overall, all those organizations, to me, are thriving and doing well. I've learned that success comes from building relationships and serving one another, and that's the only way we can affect change. I'm not here because I'm brilliant or come from wealth. I'm here because I have the ability to make things better. It's a gift that I've given, and I continue to work and humbly develop. I have nothing to gain personally, financially, or any way from being on the city council, but I want to help Madera succeed. In closing, I'll leave you with this. No matter what we accomplish, if we don't do it with love, we are no more than a clinging symbol. That's why I'm here, to see Madera thrive and help everyone in the view succeed, not just me. We all have to succeed together. Your success is my success, and our success together is Madera's success, and that's what we should be here for. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rocher. Mr. Zachariah?
Counsel, thank you for having me. I have lived here for a little over 38 years, and in that time, I've been raised about giving back to my community. I think many of you have experienced what I've done. I was raised, you know, with the Kiwanis Club and giving back to those organizations. Since then, most notably when robotics was in need of a programming mentor in 2012, I took that on, and over the next seven years, we built that program into a world-class, world-champion program. I've always felt myself a person that liked to take on challenges. You know, when asked to do things like, why don't we have a Fourth of July fireworks show? And when people would say, it's not going to be possible. I didn't take that and just say we couldn't do it. It was something that I said is going to be done, because it was for the better of the people. As a businessperson, I've been working in our family business for over 20 years. I think that experience is something that, to this council, brings a lot of weight. I have a lot of knowledge of what businesses need to grow, what they're seeking to come to Madera. Madera has always spoken about the need for high-paying jobs here, not just a, you know, low-paying job. It's not going to be just kind of doing whatever. It's going to really take understanding what a business needs. Since then, I've become president of my association, so when you talk about your own people and your own place, trusting you with the decisions of that, I think it speaks highly. I joined the city as far as the beautification committee a few years ago. I served on there for two years. Since then, I have now become on the planning commission. I've been serving that for the last three years. I've actually sit in Councilmember Evans' seat just last week, and I think through that, it has definitely given me a great insight as to how the city works, how the city government works, again, where we need to go, and some of the things that are lacking in this city. And I think through those, I think it best resonates of why this is a great fit for me to be able to serve on this council. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zachariah. At this time, I'd like to open up to public comment, if anybody would like to come up and speak. I see none. City Clerk Gonzalez, do we have any Zoom or written comment?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I close public comment. At this time, the council members will be able to ask our candidates questions. I'll be going to the order of my right to the left, and if each council member could ask one, and we will continue going down the line. If you have a second question, we'll come back around to you. Both candidates will have the opportunity to answer the question that the council member asks you. We will rotate in order, so first will be Mr. Rocher, then Mr. Zachariah. Second question, we will reverse it. With that, do I have any questions for my colleagues before we begin? Okay, Councilwoman Evans.
Before I ask a question, I do have to say something. I must say this. It was brought to my attention that I host an event called the Christmas Extravaganza, and the fact that, in the event, if I was to have received funds from either of these gentlemen, I would not be able to participate in this election. I would have to recuse myself. I wanted to go on record stating that neither gentleman has given, done, or anything of that nature in reference to the Christmas Extravaganza. It's something that I've chosen to do, and it's something that's not for the faint at heart, it's for the children of the city of Madera. So I just want everyone to know that nothing was given to me, nothing was given to me from my campaign or anything else. And if anyone else has received funds, just as I was asked, if I had received funds, I was asked to remove myself from the dais and step out to recuse myself. So I just want that to be on record for that right there. My question is, if you were given the opportunity to sit on this dais, and a question was posed to you, a yea or nay in reference to the streets of Madera, would you say yes, if it's in only in District One, or would you say yes, because it covers the entire city? What would you, what would you do?
I think you can't just think about District One. It's impossible to think, just if you're, it, once again, it goes to what I said earlier, it goes back to, you know, it does us no good for District One to be, to have great roads if District Two doesn't have great roads, or District Five, or District, we're, it's one city and we're all in it together. It does us no good to have really good schools in one location and bad schools in another location. Does us no good to have law enforcement on one side of town and no law enforcement on the other side of town, and no support, or put all the fire trucks on one side. And so to me, you have to think like that. It's not, it's not, your thinking becomes, I don't want to say globally, but it becomes more citywide of how you picture everything. And so to me, you're always, to me, we're always thinking about is, how can we do that? Now, when you go into finances and go, oh, we only have so much money to do these streets and stuff like this, then I think it becomes the board's opportunity to work together to be able to say, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to help you, and we're going to fix that. And then you go by need as well, is where, where is the most need at? You know, is this, where's the biggest potholes at? Let's fill those first, and then work our way back. Let's try to save some cars in the process. So that's how, I hope that's a good enough answer.
Thank you very much.
So to answer your question, I think it would be best looked at with the experience when I was dealing with beautification. The discussion came up in regards to parks and why certain parks are only built in certain areas of the town. And it was an understanding that, like I said, is where is the greatest need? And the other thing is, is you can't necessarily shut something down simply because it's for one district or the other. You have to understand that we want to move things forward. That's the intention of the council. If there's complete deadlock, and we're not moving forward, then no projects are done. So you do have to make those tough decisions, unfortunately, to support that, spinning it, regardless if it's in my district or not, to move it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Councilmember Montez.
Yeah, so my question would be related to the application. We're asked to identify some of the opportunities for the city. How would you implement some of those? What would you do? I mean, we, they were identified, but what would you do to actually make those come to fruition?
Again, it's similar to, I think, the first question. I think many of the projects that are in limbo right now are simply because there is not a unification possibly in the council. I think that there are a lot of things that are in the works, for instance, of downtown and the digest that's coming, that we shouldn't be waiting until that happens to incentivize the building of that downtown area, or incentivize businesses to move in, for instance. Again, our city has done well to bring about businesses and large corporations to this city, and if you really talk to the people that are moving here or looking to move here as far as businesses, Madera is a very, you know, future-looking, hotspot of opportunity where corporations are realizing that we are getting done more in Madera than their counterparts across the East Coast. So I think that, just like tonight, when you guys are approving headway in housing, I think there are some of those regulations that could also be looked at to improve how businesses can also come about and build without regulation. So, thank you.
I think one of the key components of who we are as, and as a city council, as well as our staff, as well, part of the thing, is relationships that you have with people. There's a lot of times that we develop those relationships with this and that, but likewise, you have to encourage those relationships. People have to want to move here. They have to want to be a part of here, those relationships we have to have with school districts and the fire and police and everything like that. We have to build those relationships. But it's one of the, the items that I think is the most notable part is, is Madera has a fantastic location where we're, where we are. We're seated for opportunity, whereas a lot of places are having to figure out which way they're going to grow this and that. But there has a tremendous amount of opportunity with our industrial parks, as well as an opportunity to bring those places in, to offer them incentives to expand what they're doing. And, and I think that's a lot of the things, as like Rohi said, is expand upon those opportunities, incentivize those things, to encourage that growth, to encourage them to be here. And I think Madera will continue to grow as a place that not only just has jobs, but have excellent jobs and a good place to live.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations on everything that you do. I think that both of you have great profiles and are great assets to our community as a whole. Can each of you tell us about a time where you had to deal with an angry member of the public, and how you dealt with it, maybe as an educator, student, I don't know, as a business owner, a customer? Can you tell us about that?
I've never had anybody angry with me, man. I taught freshman English for a number of years, if that tells you anything. I, the, the one time that I really, I learned this a long time ago, I was in Los Angeles working in, on ABC lot in Burbank as a video editor, and there was a, we had, anyway, it was a long story, but a guy was just having a bad day, and it was the end of the day, and he was in there, and we needed his expertise to get a computer up and running, and it was just a bad situation. And, and I'll never forget, I learned it from an editor, and he reached over there and he got a coat for the guy, and opened up a coat for the guy, and went, and he gave me a dollar, said, "Go buy him a bag of chips." And I went and bought a bag of chips, and we sat down, and the first thing he did was he relaxed the situation. He calmed everything down, and he gave that guy a chance to catch his breath. And then he said, didn't we even talk about the computer? He says, "You having a rough day?" And the guy said, "Man, you don't even know." And for about 10 minutes, he just kind of vented and got it through. And then from there, we went on and worked together with it. And so having, having that ability to stop and relax, and then, and I think the big thing for me is always finding common ground. Where, where are we at? Where do we agree on, and where can we go from there? And in education, many times you have a parent who's upset at a situation, or something happened to their child, and this is their, this is the best they got, this is their precious kid. And so your job is not only just to make sure that everything is good, but you also want to make sure that that person feels they can come back and have that relationship again, that they, this isn't a one-time shot, that they're, they have, they have an ability now to voice their concerns. And it helps, not only does it help you get over the first part, but it also helps you with the second part to get through that, so.
Okay, so to answer your question, I know on my application, if you looked at it, put nonviolent crisis intervention instructor, and I think a lot of you don't really know what that means. It's a lot of words. But it means I was instructed about how to take basically difficult situations and how to best handle them. Insecurity, you could imagine, the people and the type of situations that we get into. And I think when I would say the most difficult ones would be, you know, when we'd work the hospital and you're dealing with somebody who has mental health, their only intention is that they want to go home, they don't understand the process. For some of them, they don't even know what day it is, they don't know who's the president, they think aliens are coming to take them away, you know? And having to be able to communicate them, with them, what's going on next, and also to understand and identify maybe who's not supposed to be in the room? Who's the person that's not helping that situation? And maybe it's myself, you know? And that takes a lot to be able to sometimes remove yourself from a situation, knowing that it's making it worse. So, you know, a lot of times you would run into those, and you would find out the simple things. They just want something to drink, they want to be heard, they want somebody just to just understand them as much as they can. And I think that was something that I was best able to do. Yeah, sometimes I required myself to remove myself, because I was the problem, or I was making things worse. But I think my nature has always been soft-spoken in a way that I was the one that tended to calm down the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mejia. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. And again, I'd like to extend my gratitude for both of you submitting your application alongside your qualifications. As you know, this appointment is for a stint of two years, and I, alongside this council, was looking for a qualified candidate to hit the floor running. So given the amount of time, two years that we have left on this seat, and the amount of need that the city needs, how do you best fit into this position?
I mean, again, like I spoke, and I mean, it was amazing, Agenda I to I was something that I just heard last weekend, we approved to bring before you guys. So I think I've worked hand-in-hand with this council already, maybe behind the scenes, because you don't see what we necessarily do on planning, or you don't watch our meetings or listen so much, because it's just as fun as some of these city council meetings. But I think as far as knowledge of what's going on around the city, being on planning has definitely, it gives me that insight, and I think it would help in the event that I was appointed, to be able to hit the ground running and do the work that's necessary for the council.
Thank you.
The current work that I already do with the nonprofits that, that I work with in town is, it goes to show you that I have a lot of flexibility with my schedule. Fortunately, I work for Madera Unified School District, and in my position, part of my detail, if you will, is to be, to be in the community, to be a voice of the community, to listen to people's voice and bring information back and build those partnerships and relationships. We're doing a graduate profile March 24th in 2025, if you guys are free, I would love to have you guys come help us with that event. But it's one of those things with, with me, is I think it's important that, that I have the time and flexibility. And it was a conversation I had to have with my wife as well, it's like, hey, this is going to require this, it's going to require some classes, some evenings, and, and we talked about it. And as a family, we decided that we have the time, and we have the freedom to do that, we have the schedule. We may miss a basketball game of my, my daughter, I missed a basketball game this afternoon of my daughter at TJ, but at the same time, there's a lot of basketball to be played, so I get to see all that. So that's, that's how I, that's why I have the availability and the time to make those calls, to have those conversations, to be at those ribbon cuttings, to be a part of just not, not Wednesday nights, but also the other events that make the city a great city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor C.C. Gallegos. I wanted to ask you about you, if you were selected- I wanted to ask you about you, if you were selected, that you support to build more low-income housing for the farm workers or descendents for immigrants in the city of Madera? As a city council?
Of course, definitely. I, I think, I think we need more housing in general. I think that's, that's the thing is I think we need to grow our, our total housing in general. We need to have, we need to have more big houses. We need to have more, you know, it's not a Dr. Seuss thing, but we need big houses, little houses, medium houses, small houses. We need to have more housing for everybody. It's a common problem. I'll tell you, one of the things that, that we've, we've had issues with our school district is bringing new teachers into our school district and the conversation is where are they going to live? It's hard to find housing, just housing in general, a place to, and these are college graduates with four-year degrees that are launching in education. They don't have anywhere to live and they end up, you know, going to Fresno and they wind up commuting. And our goal as a school district is also to find a place for them to live here locally. And that's why it's, it's, it's a bigger problem than just the, the farm labor. But the trickle-down effect of that is actually then you wind up with even more expensive housing currently what we have. And we need to, you know, one of the exciting things is, and it has to be managed properly, but it's one of those things when you can add more housing to any, any development. And whether you go up or you build small houses or something like that, but you find people places to live. I, you know, my, I believe that, I believe that that's one of the key components of the city. You have a hospital, you have places to live, you have a good public safety and you have great schools. And that's what you need. And so of course, yeah, I totally support that.
Council, again, not to go back to the original item, but I mean, the item you approved today, A1, was essentially that. It was something that I did support last week. I did vote in favor of understanding that I can't, even as a council member, force developers to build the low-income housing. That's something they take on. That is something that they have to look at as a business to say what's most beneficial to them. But if those projects were brought before us, I would definitely support them, just as though I supported Measure A1 that you guys passed. You have to look at it and that measure really is understanding that, just like people that were here and have already left now, they're in support of it because that's how it's going to get done. Low-income housing isn't just going to be built because you have developers that are excited about those projects. You're going to have to have other means to get these things done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vegas. Next, I'm going to go to Councilmember Montez.
Come back to me. All right.
All right, so bear with me. So whoever gets selected is going to have to deal with me for. So I've got a scenario. So city manager comes to council and informs us that the finance department made a rounding error and they've identified a million dollars of discretionary funds that's up to the council. What do you do?
That'd be awesome, for one. I think in general, you know, yeah, it'd be great to think that there's, there's all these projects that I would like to get done, but again, it's, it's about the city. The city has needs. I think that the finance manager and administration would be able to come to us with a list of ideas to say, these are of priority. I think especially lately, our, our needs are in our infrastructure. I think we've seen enough of those failings to realize that if we have a million dollars to put into our city, I'd like to be on, you know, butter roads and realizing that my, my sewage line isn't going to possibly sink in tomorrow. So I would say that would be one of my priorities. I do like the idea of parks. I mean, being on beautification, that was something that I took a little bit of a passion to because it was frustrating to find out, here's all this dedicated park space that is not park space. And you realize there, the number one thing is financing. And again, going back to, you know, being a business person, it's realizing that, you know, when you support something like Measure T that is going to receive taxes for a project, it's understanding that as a business, we have to make sure that people spend their money here or it actually doesn't get collected, you know? So if there was a million dollars of extra money, spend it where it's most needed and I think it's going to be infrastructure.
First thing I'd do is I'd fix that road that Councilwoman Evans was talking about earlier. If, I think it's, whether you get a million dollars or where you get an extra $10,000 or you get a $10 million, you have to treat it the same way is what is the best thing to do with this money? And I think you have to prioritize your needs. Infrastructure is always a great place to invest it because it's, it's all, you know, nobody sees a sewer pipe until it's in front of you. And so I think those things are important to, that you go through and fix. But I think it's important that, that it's, however you, how to say this, whether you have a little bit of money or a whole lot of money, it's always the wise thing to sit down with a panel and a group of people and figure out what your, your most need is at that time. And then invest that money as best as you can into fixing those needs. You allocate, you allocate according to need and then you allocate according to progress. And to me, they, they go hand in hand because you can't do one without the other. A need is, is progress. And so, and, and sometimes you, you figure out, I'll say this. One of the other things that's great to do is sometimes if you, you have a windfall of money is to sit on it and not being in a rush to spend it, but also spend some time trying to figure out the best place and best time to go with that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Councilwoman Mejia.
How would you engage your community, your constituents?
When you refer to constituents, you mean District One or you mean the entire city constituents?
Your constituents and then others that may not know whether, you know, you're the representative or not.
For me, for, I'll just be honest with you. I'm, I'm that guy that I, my, my wife always says I never meet a stranger. My parents will say the same thing. And so I think there's a couple of ways you, you need to be, you have to be willing to as a city council person is, A, your phone's going to ring, your emails are going to get full, you're going to end up people wanting to engage with you. I've made a history from, from what I've done in education and with the people, with the groups that I work with more is it's not really building those relationships with people who want to build a relationship with you. I think it's important that you go find the people that don't know about you. And you find those, those students who that they're, they don't have the, they're not the loudest kid in the class. They're not the biggest voice in the class. I've, my, my, my family is, is, I'm, I'm a lot taller than everybody in my family. That's how I say it. And my dad always says that God made me that way because I can watch out for other people. And, and I've made a history of that. And so to me, when you see everybody that you, that you see them as not just a stranger and not just a vote, not just somebody who can, who can do something for you, but you see them as human beings and you see them as somebody that, that, that develops. And I, and I said that earlier. I think everything good comes out of having relationships. Everything prospers through our relationships and, and that's just who I am in general. I, I don't have a hard time doing that. And I think you have to be able to be out there and be in the community and go talk to people and just make yourself available. And I think everything else falls in place.
Okay, so to, to answer your question about availability, Monday through Friday, people know where I'm at. I have a business. People aren't afraid to approach me. Being on planning, I've already taken those phone calls when people have questions about planning, things that are coming up. My phone is full of my customers' phone numbers because I'm the first guy to say, if you got a question, here's my cell phone. Give me a call. I'm not somebody that hides from phone calls or text messages or emails. That's why I have like six different email accounts. So when you say, how would I engage? I think it's, it's about being available. And again, I feel like I'm somebody that is almost overly available. I do have my own personal time so that I don't go crazy when I do that. But I feel like it's something that is already there. It's something that I can engage with. If I can engage with a random customer that I have to be able to answer a question, I think anybody from the community that has a concern or a question, whether it be our district or whether it be the city, could feel that I was somebody that is approachable and easy to get a contact. I mean, my phone number is pretty much out there everywhere, so I don't think I even have to give it out. I think you could find it very easily. So I don't think there's any more I can do besides putting my face on a billboard and saying, "Call me when you have a question." But I think that's definitely where I stand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gaez. So I'll bring up another scenario. Assuming that you were appointed in this short stint and the city, city has a lot of needs, but there's a hot item that is both a need for the city, but also a need for outside developer contractor that lobbies you, requires you, or not requires you, but lobbies you to try to sway a certain way. I mean, assuming you have this position, how would you articulate and, and show that you're the best qualified? What would be your, your way of explaining yourself as to how this is in the best interest of the community and not so much in the interest of any specific entity and or development?
So again, with the experience on planning, I mean, I don't see that we get an extensive amount of this, but I think when you look at things as far as if somebody was to ask why I decided upon something, there's no personal interest, no personal gain. I think I still stand where I'm looking in the best interest of the city. So when you say somebody maybe lobbies me or tries to persuade me to support something just for their gain, it's not there. If it's not going to be for the benefit of everyone, and then it's not going to be for, for me to, to endorse or back. So I think with that, I do like to dig in deeper. And I would say that for me to support something is meaning that I have full knowledge of what I'm supporting and not just saying yes because I, I want to say yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
For the last week, I've probably gone down more rabbit holes on the internet, learning rules and guidelines and laws and campaign finances. And, and a lot of my rabbit holes I went down was because I'm also, I oversee, I'm not, I don't oversee. I'm, I'm president of several, I'm on the board with several 503Cs. So it's important for me, I, I'm thinking, okay, I got to make sure. And anyway, I've, I've learned quite a bit. And I think one of the, the, the key components of that is whenever you're approached by somebody, the city hall is, is a fishbowl. It's one of those things where everybody's looking in at you. And there's, and you guys know Madera well enough to know that you, there's no secrets you keep in Madera. You want to keep a secret, you better not have anybody see you and not tell anybody. And so city hall is, is a fishbowl where everybody gets to see what you're doing. They get to see how you vote. They get to see how you, and they see you at Save Mark. They see you at, at Chella's on, getting tacos. They see you everywhere. And so I think, I think it's about being transparent. I think it's also about relying on the, the optic of, of when you, when you break yourself on city council, you want to be above reproach. You want to make sure that, that people, when they see you, that you're respectable. It's one of those things is, is there's certain places that I, that I don't go and certain things that I don't do because of, because I work in education. And I know that there's going to be a kid that may see me. And I worked as a children's pastor at one time and there's kids that still call me Pastor Tim to this day. One of them's in this room and, and he, and it's one of those things to me is that I always want to make sure that, that you don't make yourself liable at any point, not only for yourself, but also an entire city council. We're a team. And if one of us has a black eye, we all have a black eye. And so that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Vegas.
Oh, no more questions?
No more. Thank you. Councilwoman Evans?
Okay, so you have a baseball team. You got two on, two on bases. You got the ball in the air. Strike. Do you stand or do you run?
I'm up to bat.
That's it.
I've got two guys on which bases?
First and second.
First and second. Score?
Two and two.
And how many outs?
Four. No, you have two outs, two outs.
Two outs.
Two on, two on bases, two outs, and you're up to bat. What are you going to do? Are you going to punt? Are you going to go for the home run?
I, 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 I don't believe in punting. I think it was proven scientifically that you can run the ball. I, I will always, you have to weigh the risk reward out. That's, that's a big key part. But if the risk reward are pretty even, I'm always the guy that, I, 30 years ago, I jumped in a car and drove all the way to Madera, California from Punchtula, Louisiana with a hundred and fifty bucks and a mattress and a change of clothes and a couple of books in the back of my white Ford Bronco, no pun intended. But, and I drove out here. I've never, I was never that guy. And even I, I'm, I tend to be more cautious with everything that I do. But at the same time, I'm trying to raise two little girls to take that risk. And so if you don't model that, then you're not going to, you have to be that person. And so, so I'm, I'm the guy, say, let's go see, you know, let's, let's see what we can, not see what we can get away with. That's a terrible thing to say, but let's, let's see how far we can go with this. Let's take it to the next level. Let's dream big and let's, let's launch ourselves and go for that.
So you're a team player?
You, you have to be a team player. You have to think about everybody else in, in the game. I, I use a basketball analogy. I'm better with the basketball analogy. I was never, I, I never could throw the ball good, so I was never a baseball player. With basketball, you're always thinking about the other four guys on the court. And you're always thinking about where they are and your goal is to make them successful. And if they're all part of that same team with you and they're able to enable you to be successful, then it's going to open up shots for you as well. And so for me, my, what I believe is you weigh the risk reward out. Don't take stupid risks. Don't put yourself out there. But at the same time, I think it's important that you, you're willing to take that little bit of an edge. Let's, let's go for it. Let's, let's see. Let's, let's hopefully we can pull this off. And for the betterment of not just yourself, but everybody involved.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Just to understand your analogy, so.
I know I'm different.
No, it's fine. It's fine. So I think it's best to look at what that person's position is being the person at bat. If I was the manager of that team, meaning I had, it was my own money, my own stake, I'd do whatever I wanted. I'd maybe just throw the bat down and run circles because it's my own risk. It's no difference in my own business. If I want to take a risk in my own business and do something crazy, it's my own business. But when you talk about somebody on the city, this is not my money. So fiscal responsibility is going to be key. So when you say, well, what I do, I would do what my coach tells me to do. If he says it's the best interest to take that swing, I would take the swing. If it's to take the bunt and run, that's what I have to do. Baseball players do that. They might not like it, but they might get the signal, just you have to do what you have to do. You're going to get out. But if it advances the two other runners, that was the best option for the game. Okay, so, thank you.
So do you understand my analogy and what I was saying? Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Councilmember Montez.
Okay, so just for my last question, there's no right or wrong answer, but the correct answer was to buy the finance department better calculators.
There you go. Okay.
So, yeah, this is kind of playing off of, I think, Councilmember Rodriguez's question, or Mr. Rodriguez's question. If you've identified a conflict in anything you do, what, what do you do?
I mean, you've identified a conflict in any item that's brought before you as a council member. I mean, as a legal obligation for one to reclusive myself. So I think that's very important to realize that, again, it's something that's ingrained and has been ingrained for the last three years that be careful of, you know, who you're talking to, who you're dealing with. Madera is small. I don't think anybody would be here and say, I don't know that person or that's not my uncle or my cousin or my whoever. So it's very difficult. But in every sense, if it's something that's going to sway or judge my decision, then yes, you have to by all means remove myself from that decision.
Going back to the fishbowl idea, you're, you, you can't, you, there's nothing to get away with. But the other, the other thing is, I think anytime that you're confronted with something, I think it's important that not only do you seek advice, you do your own research. You go, we go find out what you need to know and make sure that, make sure you know where you're standing at. But likewise, you have other council members that you can rely on. And then you, you have a city attorney that, that I'm sure that would love to answer phone calls and, and, and help you to make sure that you don't get your city in trouble. And I think that's important too, is that you, you find those resources and you rely on those resources. You, you can be smart, but you can be a whole lot smarter if you can seek advice. And so it's about finding those people that you get advice from and asking those questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. How would you handle a situation where your personal values conflict with the wishes of your constituents?
That's a good question. Um. You're the servant of the, of the, you're the servant of the city. Your, your job is to take care of the city. Um, whether, whether you agree that, that, um, I would say, if, whether you agree that marijuana distribution is good or bad, um, that's, that's the law. And so whether you agree that you have multiple houses on a piece of property is good or bad, that's the law that says that. And so to me, your, your values, you, you, you should never violate your values. You should always be true to who you are. But at the same time, you're serving the people in the city of Madera and you're serving the people and for, in this case, you're serving the people, especially in District One. And so you, you don't, I don't, I can't ever think of a place where your, your values are going to be compromised because you're, you're upholding the wishes of the people. And, and I, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not smart enough to think of a situation like that, but I think it's very important that, that you don't, I don't ever, I don't think anybody should have to compromise their values. But also I think it's important that you listen to not only your constituents in your district, but also throughout the city from, from, you know, whether they're in Tozier or whether they're, um, off of Schnorr. Um, it doesn't matter where they're at. I think it's important that you, you have those things, um, and you, you listen to what they do and your job is to help the city, the will of the city. Even if you don't agree with them, that's still your job. That's, that's, that's why you were elected. Your job is to, to carry out the duties of the people.
Okay. So to answer your question, I think it does go back to understanding what my position would be. It is to be for the people of my district. Um, I think that if an agenda item came about where the majority of the people were in favor of it, to some degree, you're going to have to take their, their way in on that. Now, as a council, for instance, if it was, say, like, um, he said, the marijuana distribution, and I had concern, for instance, for children's, you know, um, access to it or their exposure to it. Well, as a council, you have every means to guide where they go and how they present themselves so that you can still be in favor of it, if that's what the city was wanting, but also have a way to, you know, express your concerns or your beliefs through it. Um, a lot of these are going to come about. I don't think anybody's going to agree on everything that, you know, to say that whether it be the casinos, the marijuana, for me on planning, I was always big about alcohol and, you know, when we would get new establishments wanting to put alcohol. It's not against the belief, but, you know, statistics will show you, put one on every corner, we're going to have a drinking problem. So that was something that on planning that I would always take in to say, um, you know, can we take a stand? Can we really maybe guide how some of this goes in so that we don't get into a problem of just be turning into a huge drinking city? Um, so I think there's creative ways that you can go about it. People mostly want to be heard. I think that's something that with all of these issues that come about, again, whether I believe them or not, people want to be heard. They want to be, have an opportunity. Uh, this council provides that. That's why we have public comment and they have opportunity for those people to come before us. Taking action is up to the council as a whole. And even if myself, you know, if I don't believe in that item and the rest of you do, then that is the will of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gairos. Um, what is a project that you've helped move forward and/or approve through your role as a member of any committee you serve? And what were the challenges and how did you overcome them?
I think the most difficult recently, um, because of the overwhelming support of it was the, uh, In-N-Out that came in. And I know you would say, well, obviously everybody wanted it, but as on planning, um, we had one of the longest discussions when it came to the little pork chop cutout that was going to go between Panda Express and In-N-Out. And I know as a, as a commissioner, um, being somebody who would frequent that area, I had a lot of concern about, you know, accidents and what it may lead to. And I know that it was a tipping point because for In-N-Out, that was their, they had to have it or they weren't going to be happy. And I know that as a council, we had to come together and, you know, essentially trust the city's reports, trust the city engineer and be assured that in order to approve it, there was going to be, if things weren't going to go the way that we wanted, that there would be steps in place to kind of mitigate, um, any of those issues. And I think that was something because again, if we were to take a hard press on that item and say, no, there's no pork chop, you're not getting it, you guys wouldn't have an In-N-Out today. And I think that looking at it and saying that obviously I don't think I would be here today if that was the case, because I'd probably be burned already for not allowing In-N-Out. But, um, it was, it was taking a step back and realizing, okay, there can be some compromise, but we didn't have to give them everything. We could still put in our concerns in order to make that go through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're right. My daughters would have got you if you'd have got rid of the In-N-Out. Um, I'd have been behind him. Um, no, it, um, I, I, I can go through, I think one of my most recent ones was, um, I work with a Valley PBS board. Um, and, and when I became on the cab, the cab meetings went for three hours and there was so much infighting and problems within the board. Um, there was people who were mad at each other and it, it was, it was a very unhealthy place. Um, through just basically following Robert's Rules of Order and, and developing quorum and developing rules and behavior rules and how we're going to relate to each other. We, we, we developed a, uh, we have meetings now that last for 45 minutes. We get through our agendas. There's no screaming. There's no hollering. Um, when I was on the Measure K thing, I, I walked in and they said Measure K. And I'll be honest with you, I had no idea what Measure K was. And I walked into a meeting at Roundtable Pizza and I'm looking around the room and they said, uh, Risha, you know about websites, right? This was early on, really early on with using, uh, social media for campaign purposes. And, and I simply sat down and was talked about and I says, okay, this is what we're going to do. We're going to vote, we're going, we're going to acknowledge that we're going to make the city a better place. We're going to, uh, plead, put more, uh, police officers on duty and we're going to build a new fire station. I said, that's our message. And we communicated that message, built a website around it, built social media around it. Um, same thing with Measure M was another one that sat down, let's simplify the message, just simplify what we're going to believe, simplify what we want to get out and follow through with that. And then by simplifying the process, um, and then staying on task with it, staying on course, we will accomplish those things. And so those are my instances.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Uh, Councilwoman Evans?
Okay. I wasn't expecting to go right now. Okay. Our city is supposedly divided with the east and the west. We have a railroad track that divides the east and the west. Do you consider us to be the east and the west? Or do you consider us to be one city, the city of Madera?
You, you would be, how do I say this? I, I used to live off of Adele Street, Adele and D Street at one time. I lived over there for a while. Um, my wife has worked at Sierra Vista and Pershing and, and just working in school district. I'm, I have the opportunity to spend time on both sides of town. And you would, you would be, I think it would be disingenuous for me to say that they're the exact same, that, that both sides are the, are the exact same thing. My view is, and, and it was a conversation I had today with somebody and they were, they were grilling me about tonight and, and my conversation was simply, it, it's not about, it's not about your district, your district, your district. It's about the city as a whole. Um, there are differences across the thing, but I will tell you this is, is when you get around, uh, when I get around the children of our schools, I get around the Madera High Football Team, who is the nine, three, six, three, seven, not all of them, but Washington students come across the Madera tie. They, they, they come across, and you're with the Madera South Football Team, or you're with the Torres kids that live way out in the north end of town. And you sit down with those kids, you quickly realize, um, they're the same kids. They're the same things. And one of the, one of the things that I learned during COVID, um, I live, I live in Home Ranch, um, and, and been, I'm, I'm blessed, um, to live where I, I, I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I have a, I have a great time. But one of the things that I learned during COVID was just because you live in, in an expensive house, doesn't mean you don't have needs. And I learned real quickly that a lot of the kids in my neighborhood, families were struggling, not just financially, but struggling mentally to, to deal with COVID. I was having a hard time dealing with COVID. I'm a people guy. I'm out all the time in public and also you got to tell me I got to stay home. And I, I was having issues. But I quickly realized that, that, that socioeconomically doesn't, doesn't, just because you have more socioeconomically or peers that you do, doesn't mean that you don't have the same needs as the kid across town. And likewise, the kid across town, just because socioeconomically, they're not the same and they, they, they're, you know, I, we, we pass out shoes with the Leos and it's, it's my favorite. It's one of the best things I do. And we go around and we go to different places and, and, and when you're, you're watching that, you, we pass out shoes at Lincoln as well as we do to the kids at, at, um, at Millview, at James Monroe. The, the, the needs are, are the same all the way across. And so I, I think it's disingenuous to say they're the same. Um, but we are Madera and we are one city of Madera. And when you get down to the core of who we are and you really start talking to people, we're all the same people. Democrat, Republican, we're really not that far apart from each other. Race, color, whatever differences that we may have and the railroad tracks separates us because we have to, I have to go around certain roads and stuff like that. But at the same time, the needs and what we need to do for the city are, are the same all the way across.
Thank you.
A little long. I'm trying to remember your entire question, but it's simply about the divide in the east and the west, correct?
Is it the east? Is it the west? Or are we one Madera?
So I think when you look at the city, you have to understand that for one, there's, you can't blame the current council. This is a city that's been growing and that maybe some poor decisions that were made in prior councils years before had maybe led to some kind of economic divide. Realizing that when you say the tracks are downtown is there, that's, that's the birthplace essentially of Madera. So where it grew from there was just based on decisions. Is one better than the other? Are we against each other? No. But they have both different needs. Um, as an aging east side, they probably have more need for infrastructure than the west side. That's new and sprawling and just maybe five to 10 years old. Um, you say east and west, I say even north and south. That river alone in our district would divide differences. Talking about the north side having development that is ongoing and sometimes not even a year old. So I think it's best to realize that as a council, again, we come together collectively and we address each of the needs of those specific districts. It's not to say we're against them or we're, we're together. It's, yes, we are together. It's for whatever's going to be, again, better for Madera as a whole, because as they grow, we would grow as well. Thank you.
So we're one city.
One city.
One city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. I'm going to ask a question at this time. Um, you did mention Measure K. The voters put that in place, 50% fire, 50% um, police. But there is other things in that measure that the money could be used for. This council had put, has put in a resolution to protect that money to make sure that it goes there. But again, we're not going to be here, you know, years from now. And there could be change in this council like you've seen it today. If this council was choosing to change those allotments in Measure K and you had the community saying no, what would you do as a council member?
I think it's best to realize where we would be standing at that point, where our financial status is. I mean, Measure K and, and most of these measures are there to fill a gap. Um, you know, if, for instance, the city budget was to increase to not necessarily need Measure K anymore, maybe it goes away entirely. But obviously it's there because we cannot just simply put it in the budget and take that on a regular basis. So we pass Measure K. Where it's needed, if it was today, yeah, sure, fire and police need it in their employment. They're very short on staff. Um, it's an ongoing, you know, battle. It's in every department. But yes, when Measure K has to deal with fire and police, there is a need today. If five years from now, they say, hey, staffing levels are perfect, then of course the council should have that, that, um, option to move it where they see necessary. And it might not be in staffing. It may be some other department related to Measure K.
I, I've learned a lot about measures over the, the time since Measure K. Um, and one of the things that I've learned is, is the, um, Measure K has a lot of, of open-ended things you could do with it as well. Um, but the people, I think, have spoken specifically for that to go towards that. I know when we first, like, when I, when I first joined, I think we had like three officers on patrol at night, um, for a city of, or sixty, or probably it was 60,000 then. Um, and having three patrol officers at night. And I think one of the things is that not only do we use Measure K, and I go back to the same thing, schools, um, as schools and public safety are, are your two, two big things that we need to make sure that we, we progress and that we have quality. And I think part of Measure K, um, can be used for those things to make sure that we ensure those things. And so to me, I, I support continuing using the money for, for what it was designed for, is, is to support our, our officers. Um, we, we have horrible retention right now within our, not horrible retention, I'm sorry, cheap. Um, but we, we have retention issues within our, our, um, our, our police department and we, we lose people. And this, one of the things that I think Measure K was designed to help fix those things. And I think it's one of the things that we need to make sure until we get those things fixed and corrected, then, you know, we have a lot of young police officers that are doing a fantastic job of keeping our city safe. But if we still have, in five years from now, if we still have young officers who are out there, then we haven't done a good job of, of correcting those things. And I think Measure K is designed to solidify that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rocher. At this time, several of our council members have asked quite a few questions. Does anybody have any follow-up questions that they would like to ask before we move on? I don't see that. Um, I'm going to give, uh, Mr. Rocher was the next to speak. Is that correct? Do you continue the next question? If you want to do a closing statement, a couple minute closing statement before we move on?
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor Gairos. Um, I, you know, I, I, I've been honored. It's been a learning process for the last two weeks. Um, one of the reasons, I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to, I don't want to say I don't want to be a politician, but I, I, it was, it was one of those things that I thought would be cool a long time ago. But as I got older, I realized, no, it's a lot easier to have a friend who's a politician than it is to be a politician. Um, but the, one of the reasons why I got involved in the last election, it was to support, um, I wanted to see, I wanted to, oh, you're awesome. Um, I really wanted to see the city, um, the city council develop harmony and peace. That's, that's why I'm here. I don't have any, I don't have any, I say, I don't have anything to gain. I, I'm really not an aspiring, I don't want to go anywhere. I don't want to be the next governor of California. I don't even know if that works because I wasn't born in the state. But, um, but I, I really honestly, my, my heart is, is to be here and do this. And, and one of the things I deleted because of time out of my speech, but just because Councilman, uh, I mean, just because Mayor Gairos, um, has appointed me, doesn't mean she gets two votes on the board either. Um, that's, that's one of the things that I want everybody to know. And if you know me well enough, you know who I am and nobody, I answer to God. I answer to my mom and dad who are watching from Punch to Louisiana. I answer to my wife who's on Adele Street right now and my children. And that's it. I'm responsible for myself. And, and the decisions I make are based on, on the needs of the city. The decisions I make are based on, on working together with each other and having harmony and developing compromise with each other. And that's who I am. That's, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm still here. When it, when, a couple of weeks ago, when everything happened, I, I paused for a moment and, and my wife says, you, you need to follow through with everything that you need to do. You need to give it your best. You need to run the race as if to win it. And it became the conversation of if, if, if you're there, you should go for it. You should, you need to do those things. And fundamentally, it's, it's not about me. It's not about what I'm going to do. It's, it's about how I can serve the city of Madera, how I can serve you and serve everybody on the city council. Um, and, and make the, there are the best place it is possible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rocher.
I'll say in closing, the reasons why I'm here tonight. My main reason for being here tonight is to bring about a well-roundedness to this council. Again, being somebody who has, uh, been working for 20 years and also have, who has. Again, being somebody who has been working for 20 years and also have, who has had their own business for the last 12 years, I think it brings a lot of insight to, again, the needs of the city. Again, most of the things that, like, you know, Councilman Montes says, if we had an extra million dollars, well, you know what? If we grew our city through business, you could have that extra million dollars through tax revenue. So I think when you look at things, most of the problems in this, in this city, in this council, it's always the same thing, if we had the money, if we had the money. So I think that my position, position on the council would be simply that. How could we get more and fresh ideas to make not just Madera better? We are better. We are great. But how do we move that goalpost forward? A lot of that comes from experience. Again, I hate to keep saying planning commission, but planning did unfortunately give me three years to kind of see how city moves, hearing the frustrations of whether it was businesses, whether it was the housing of how hard it was to get some of these applications, how long it took, how expensive it was. So when you take a lot of that and you say, well, how can we help those people? Obviously there, the city has done a good job for the most part in incentivizing some of these ideas, but I think we need to do more. And I think the other thing is, is that you need somebody that is going to be well-balanced. I don't side with anybody any more than the other. I think that if we had any item come before us, I would be somebody that it's easily approachable, somebody that is understanding to the, to the item. If it was something that you happen to be passionate about, just convey that to me and make it a good argument. And I think it would be something I could support regardless of the vote tonight. Okay? So I think that is something that is most important when we talk about the council is not just who's going to sit there, but who's going to work best with this council. Thank you.
Well, we would like to thank you, gentlemen, for giving us your time tonight and answering our questions. So at this time, I bring it back to my colleagues, if them would like to share anything. Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. I know that at this time, I think we have, we have direction as far as like where we want to go. And I know it's not easy for a lot of us out here. So I'll take the first stab at it and see if we can try to move this council. I think more importantly, we're looking at the, the benefit of, of this community, the interests of the community. And we all, I mean, I think we all noticed today, just by answering the questions and, and we all heard you that you have deep passion, not only for your family, your business, your trade, but more importantly, for this community. And with that, I mean, we got to look at this, well, how, how do we, how do we find someone that has that quality? Right? And I'm in the position that we need someone that has the institutional knowledge, that has city government knowledge, that already has some experience in city to move this thing forward. It's a two-year deal and we have a lot of projects coming before us. We have a lot of important decisions, whether they're measures or not and money. We talked about resolutions. We have an item before us that was just passed and that's going to require us to continue to, to exercise those policies to, to allow for more affordable housing. We have a lot that we can do to grow our community. And when I say that, I mean, I too have passion and I heard it today from both of you. But within these next two years, the stint that we have, I feel that this council needs that person that's going to hit the floor running. And that's why for me, it's, it makes it a lot easier for me, the transition from a planning commission, working with our staff, working with legal counsel. It's just like, I, I don't want to say it's not a no-brainer. I'm just saying it just makes it make sense that we move on and move this community forward through this council. It's a two-year commitment. If for whatever reason, someone does not get appointed and you have that desire to continue to move on to a political career, then it'll be available. But for now, I'm looking at the interests of this community and what best fits this council. Again, it's my opinion. And I noticed that both of you have deep passion, but one of you has institutional knowledge, which is city experience, working with their staff. And for that reason, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Rohe Sakaria.
I have a motion.
And I'll second it.
And a second. Can we do a roll call? City Clerk Gonzalez?
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
No.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Gallegos?
No.
It's tied 3-3, three yes votes, three no votes. Motion fails.
Okay. Any of my colleagues, like, oh, Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, so I wanted to make some comments for, this is a, this is a very tough decision for me. I think both are qualified, very qualified, very engaged in the community. Yeah, hearing, hearing all the comments, you know, making sure that the council is working together has been a concern, I think, for all of council for some time. I don't always agree and we're not always going to agree. I don't always agree with myself sometimes. You know, think about things. I don't, I try not to come in to council with any decisions already made. I have my guiding principles, but I always want to have an open mind when I come and hear, you know, the things that we're going to make decisions on. No matter what happens, I want, well, I hope that both candidates continue to stay extremely engaged in the community. I don't think we will, I think we want to have this position filled. City Clerk kind of laid it out where it's going to cost the city a pretty good amount of money. And then we could put ourselves in situations like this where it's 3-3 and nothing gets done. And we've been in that situation before. So I, I just wanted a little bit more time to think. So I apologize, Mayor Protem. I think we can come to a decision today. I don't, I don't know if it's going to be the lock the, the whole time, but I think, I think that we can. But I just wanted to say those comments. Hopefully, no matter what happens at the end of the day, it may, may go to a special election. I don't know. I hope it doesn't, but I hope everybody stays engaged and stays, you know, stays communicative with the council no matter what decisions we make.
Thank you, Councilman Montes. Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, I want to say thank you to both gentlemen. I spoke with both of you and I truly appreciate your hearts, the time that you took to just consider, to sit here between Steve and I. That's a lot by itself, but no, seriously, I thank both of you. God bless you. And however it turns out tonight, I just want you to know that either or, just hit the ground running and come and let's bridge the gap that has been and let us all come together as one. Sometimes we may not, sometimes I just kind of get out here by myself. But seriously, come together and, and let's do this for our city. Because that's what each and every one of us have been elected to do, not to be me, 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 but we are supposed to be one. There's no I and team and that's what we all are. We are a team. So I thank you very much. I thank you for your time and God bless both of you and your families as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. I would just like to say a few words. I know both candidates very well, I would say. Worked with them in several projects. I did look for a candidate knowing, crossing my fingers I was going to win and try to find somebody who was connected and present in this community. Not saying that either one is not present or either one is not connected. The gentleman I nominated has been on our ADA commission, has worked with our staff, moved projects forward and is involved in this community probably just as much as I am. And if you know me, I'm everywhere. I come out of the bushes and District One is a district that's very vocal. And I hear it left and right, everywhere I turn, not even District One. I hear it from all the other districts. And I feel that the person that I, I kind of looked at to take the seat of District One, talked to quite a few community members that are involved in this city, not just District One, looking to move the council forward. So with that, at this time, I would like to nominate Tim Rocha to take the seat as District One.
Through the mayor, that would be moved to appoint.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Thank you. I move to appoint Tim Rocha as District One.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, City Clerk Gonzalez, please.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
No.
Mayor Garcia? I'm sorry, Mayor Gallegos?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
No.
Three yes votes, three no votes, motion fails.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask for City Attorney to come up to the podium and give us kind of directions, where to go from here.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like you're at a 3-3, which for the minutes of the public, you need to have four votes in order for anything to happen tonight in favor of one candidate or the other. So you have some options available to you, assuming nobody wants to change their vote and assuming that leaves you with, assuming you don't want any other candidates that you can agree on. You have two options. One is to go out for a special election. The city clerk has indicated, when you talk to the county, that'll cost you roughly $30,000 to $40,000. It will mean that for a period of about a year, you will not have a representative in District One. And it means too, that you don't know who's going to be elected. It is entirely possible that someone other than the two candidates that are here this evening could be appointed or, or, excuse me, could be elected as part of special election. In other words, the council will not have control over that. But that is an option if the city council can come to an agreement. Now, there is one more thing out there that if you would, if you're looking at the candidates and saying, yes, these are both candidates that meet the minimum qualification, they're both good candidates, we're just unable to come to an agreement to them. There is an option that I could toss out there. I'm not saying that I like this option in any sort of way, but when there are elections and there is a tie vote, often the two people who are tied vote will come together and they'll do a coin toss or some other mechanism in order to determine who will take the seat. And we've seen that throughout the country. So if the city council was inclined to not do a special election and inclined, inclined to keep these two candidates, the council could decide as a body ahead of time to say, you know what? Let's do a coin toss and we will abide by the decision of the coin toss, whatever that may be. So I'm not, again, saying it's, it's a good option, but it is an option to avoid special election. And it is an option that at least one of the two people that has been selected by the candidate will be chosen at least as a known quantity. But then again, special election is also an option. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney. So basically we're saying that these are our two options. My colleagues need to be aware that if we go to a special election, this seat will stay vacant for over a year. And we, as you see, are 3-3 and then we will be maybe struggling to move policy forward as a city. And so I just want you to have that in the back of your head, that if we were to do option two with the coin toss, that person would take the seat at the next city council meeting. Is that correct, City Attorney?
You could do that or you can even have them take the seat this evening. Generally, I'm just talking about a general, generally a lot of family members would like to be present when they're sworn in and seated. So the council could have the option of appointing them at the next meeting. If you were inclined to do a coin toss, it would automatically go into effect. And they'd also have the time to sign the oath of office with the city clerk and then have the ceremonial oath administered to them at the meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you, City Attorney. Councilwoman Mejia?
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't imagine us as a council that's supposed to represent all of the people of Madera, reducing it to a coin, a coin toss rather than allowing the members of the public, especially District One, to come out and voice their concerns. I really appreciate the residents of District One that took the time to give me a call, to send me a text, send me emails and, and let me know, you know, what I had said during the last meeting. I feel like people really need to be a part of the process because people elected me to represent this district. They didn't, they didn't elect me to decide over other districts. And I just feel like we're shutting out the people by continuing, by rushing this. And I just, I just wanted to rate, raid, raid that tonight because I did hear back from residents. And yeah, those are my comments right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. Shannon, I did have a question for you. You mentioned these are our options. So at the discretion of this council, to Councilwoman Mejia's point, that process, we can open that back up. We have until what time to decide the appointment before we have to decide the special election? Can you please elaborate on that?
February 2nd, 2025. That's a Sunday.
So that typically means two more meetings? Or we have one other meeting scheduled for January?
We have one regular meeting scheduled for January, I believe, 15th. However, at the council's election, you can do special meetings, assuming you can get a quorum there on a particular day.
Thank you. I, I too feel that a coin toss would not be, and you know, I, and I agree with Councilwoman Mejia, by the way, that I don't think we leave it up to a coin toss. I think the merits that they have, each of them provide, you know, their passion for this community. Again, I express my, my feelings on that, but I'm open to that so that we can allow the process to move forward. I mean, I can go back here again and do another nomination, but I'm afraid that we may just find ourselves in gridlock and not have an appointment this evening. I, I've expressed why, how this council can move forward, how someone that's already part of this body sits in one of this, one of these seats. But again, that's not going to satisfy all my other council members. And I think we have to move past that and find a happy median. And I'm willing to open that up alongside Councilwoman Mejia to allow for more public input, if that's the case. But I do not want to leave that to a coin toss. I appreciate that, Shannon, the strategy, but I, I think maybe the public may, may have to voice in their concerns as well.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Mejia?
Thank you, Mayor. I, we, we were aware of this since the first day that it was brought up, December 4th. Some of us did have a heads up as far as what the process would look like and an understanding of it. So now having our time period reduced really is on us as a council. So I think that like Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Rodriguez mentioned, it would be good for us to allow notification to the entire city, District One. I am really impressed with both candidates. Like I mentioned earlier, you have such a great profiling, you're both such an asset to Madera. But I feel really strongly that we need to allow public input because they're going to represent those residents. So with that, I would like to second that if that was a motion.
If you're making the motion, I will second that. I'm not, I'm not, did I make a motion? I said I would agree. So if you're making the motion, I would second that. If not, then I'll make the motion and to Councilwoman Mejia's point is if we can open that up and we have that option and discretion as a council, worst case scenario, we can bring it back to a special election to make that determination. But at this point, I would, I would agree that we bring this back for their next regular meeting and follow that same process through the public and give them the opportunity to make their comments.
Mayor Protem, if I may, so just so that I'm clear, the motion is that we will continue this item to the next regular meeting of the city council. You're directing staff to send out a mailer or some other sort of outreach to the members of District One, letting them know that there have been two nominees and that their nominee, that their appointment will be discussed at the next regular meeting and inviting any public input. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm not sure if at that moment, we want to allow for any other person to come and make a, a presentation qualification. But I think from what I understood, it was mainly to allow a public comment.
On the two individuals that have already been nominated, is that correct?
I believe that was the, the, the direction that I got or was?
I, I, I don't see why we would close it.
So let me, let me, let me rescind that and say, open that to the public. Aside from the comments that we have, we have two individual appointees and open it.
May I ask a clarifying question if that's appropriate, man?
Yes.
The phrase sending out a mailer was brought up. Staff has no problem. There's obviously a cost associated with the mailer. Memory serves me, I believe there's 12,000 or 13,000. residents in District One, averaging three people per household, three point nine people per household, I think, is about right. I simply want to make sure that council's aware that there's a cost associated with mailer. And if that's the intent of the council, obviously, staff is going to do that. Or if there was another forms of media that council was looking at, such as posting it on the website, posting it on the Madera Tribune. Again, no problem at all sending mailers out. I simply want to make sure that staff has proper direction.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, but I have some comments. Councilwoman Evans?
I think the clarification that she wanted to make.
Yeah, so we didn't get a mailer when there was a special election for District Five. So I think that just website, social media, whatever channels you already have available.
Okay, Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, in referencing both Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Mejia, I'm in agreeance to having the public to come back and to speak. Because, yes, we are the ones, this body, we determine as to the two gentlemen tonight. But District One serves. They will be servicing District One just as well as they be servicing our, the entire body. So as opposed to, you see how bad I was with the whole baseball thing, so we do not need to flip a coin. That's not going to work. And I mean, we were elected by the city. So why would we here, now determined by coin toss, to have one or the other? These gentlemen both serve our city. They represent us very well. We each had our opinions, and yes, we are three-three split, and we've been this way many times. But to give each one of them the opportunity to be able to campaign, to go out into the city and to allow individuals to make the comments and to see where it stands. We're diplomatic body right here. Let's allow District One to make the choice as to whom they would like to have to sit in this seat versus it being this body here. So this is where I'm going.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Councilmember Montez?
I guess I was the only one that wasn't too appalled by your suggestion.
It was out there. I will be the person to say that.
Just the rationale that Shannon put out there is that if it went to election and there was a tie, that's how it would have been decided, right? So essentially, there's a tie here. But hearing the council understand the concern, and that's not going to be a go. But so we would have the opportunity to do a special meeting if needed. And at that special meeting, it would still require four votes. So even if there were, you know, if somebody wasn't there, it wouldn't be a simple majority. It would be four votes. Okay. And yeah, I agree. I think coming back, I'm not ready to say this is over and done with. I think we get another crack at it, but then opening it up and having other people, you know, made aware that they can also come in and, you know, either make comments or sounds like putting their name in the hat, which is probably going to make the decision harder, not easier. But hey, you know, we give everybody the opportunity. So I'm in favor of tableing it to next meeting. And then so at that point, we would require other candidates to make their pitch again, including other people who, you know, we didn't get the talent portion tonight. So can we add that next time?
May I respond to the question?
Yes, Shannon. Thank you.
You can if you really want to. Most city councils do not. If there's somebody new that's coming on that the city council is inclined to nominate, then you can certainly provide them with the opportunity to say there's a third person to make their pitch and answer any questions the city council may have. The other suggestion I may have is if anyone new is inclined to toss in their hat, you set a deadline so that the city knows and we can include their application material in the updated agenda that will be going out for the regular meeting. Generally, what do we need? At least a week in advance of the meeting to receive all the application materials? So if I'm reading, so we have a meeting on the fifteenth, so it'd be January eighth. January eighth, if that works for the city council, assuming the motion passes.
January eighth or sixth?
The eighth.
And that was my understanding of the motion, right?
If the first and the second agree with it, that's fine. I'm seeing one nod. I'm seeing two nod.
Okay, so you have clarification, city attorney?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
City manager?
Before a council takes a vote, I simply, if it would be appropriate for me to summarize the direction. The council at this time is going to continue the meeting to the next regular scheduled meeting on January the fifteenth. City staff has been directed to post that council is going to be discussing this item and that it's also open to other candidates if they would like to apply. Is that what? So any community member can apply. The application deadline will be 5:00 PM on January the eighth. Their applications will be submitted to the city council while at the posting of the agenda. Candidates can apply. They do not necessarily have to be nominated by a council member. And at the January the fifteenth meeting, those individuals will all be interviewed, similar to what occurred this evening. Am I saying that right? And the reason I ask is I suspect city staff's going to receive that inquiry.
Could I make a suggestion, city council? You never know how many applications you're going to get. And in interest of the city council's time, my suggestion is, is once you've had an opportunity to review those applications, if there's someone who would like to make an additional nomination, and you can do so at that time rather than having them do all their presentations. But it's entirely up to the council.
City clerk, I'm looking at the calendar, and Wednesday, and you guys have to put out the packet on Thursday. Would it behoove us to say the sixth to give a little bit more time? Because we could get twenty, thirty. I mean, we don't know. Two, just so that we have that leeway. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Yes. Here's a suggestion that I know the process of the public was of topic. And, you know, we want to certainly respect that. So would this body then feel inclined to look at the at the applications that come before a deadline and make a nomination, if you have one, so that we can then bring them forward to the eighth versus having all these applications come before us and not necessarily having a desire to go through that whole process of listening to maybe fifteen to twenty applications? So maybe narrowing it down, if one of us here feels like, hey, out of these applications, I choose to nominate this person who come before the council for maybe the appointment or the interview versus having to go to twenty, thirty of them. I'm not sure what we're expecting, but I'm sure you may see.
If I may, Mayor, just jump in briefly. One concern that I have about that approach is we do have Brown Act requirements. And the ability to make decisions outside of the meeting is somewhat constrained for the city council. But the other thing is if a nomination is made, there'll need to be a first, a second, and at least four council members who agree to that nomination anyway. So that's typically taking place in the open session component.
And maybe that's the process that we should undertake, maybe at the public meeting, is if we do have thirty applicants, maybe at that moment, we may then decide, hey, I wish to nominate this person here. And maybe go through that exercise versus having to, you know, entertain all if there's not support for that. I mean, that's just my humble opinion, so that we don't drag this out further. There's a lot of time. I'm sure you can certainly select a very qualified candidate by then.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Councilmember Montez?
Oh, that was my question. That's my understanding, is that we'll have those. And then so council members would have to basically review them individually before the meeting and then become ready to make that nomination. And then so the council still have the opportunity to essentially, you know, have the decision-making ability on who's going to be an applicant. So that was my comment, but you answered it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Evans?
Okay, so let me get this correct. We're going to have this stack of nominees to come before us. But at the end, will we be able to say that we still only have the two nominations as opposed to three, four, five? We can dwindle it still down to the two. So even though you've had twenty nominations, we can still come back and have two individuals here that are now up for the seat versus having to deal with an entire conglomerate of people that want to run for the position. Am I correct or not?
Yes, that's correct. And in fact, you don't even need to make any additional nominations. So if you get forty applicants and none of them meet the standards or expectations of the city council, city council doesn't need to nominate them. So you can still have the same two nominees that you currently have.
Okay, but then let me ask you this now. But if, again, if we come back and we still have a three-three draw, then it will go to the entire city? Well, not the entire city, I shouldn't say that. It'll go to District One. And at that time, will someone else be able to toss their hat in the ring? And it could be very well a two, three, four?
Yes. So on a special election process, anybody can toss their hat in the ring as long as they're a qualified voter. And at the regular meeting, anybody can toss their hat in the ring, but they will not be a nominee unless four council members agree to add them as a nominee.
But if we can't come to a consensus and do a four-whatever, four-two?
I've still got a quarter. That was a joke, by the way.
And we might end up using a quarter versus having to use somebody else, you know? I'm serious because.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. And so staff and city attorney has direction?
Yes, I believe so. And if it's okay, you can either do it by vote, just a voice vote, or you can do it by consensus.
Could you do a roll call vote, please, City Clerk Gonzalez?
So just to confirm, we have a motion by Council Mayor Protem Rodriguez, a second by Councilwoman Mejia. Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Gallegos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montez?
Yes.
Final vote, six-zero, motion passes.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to entertain a five-minute break. And we will come back at eight-twenty-five. Don't go away.
Not gonna be like Sartre. They can come when they want to come. Pussy man? Oh, wait. I'm not gonna be like Sartre. They can come when they want to come.
Yeah.
I don't have porn. I don't have. Yeah, anyway.
Welcome back, everyone, to our meeting. City Clerk, can you take us to our D items?
Under petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements, we have item D1, purchase of new tasers for the police department.
Thank you. And Chief Charmani, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, and those who stayed with us. I appreciate the opportunity. Today, we have on the agenda the purchase of tasers for our police department. I would like to introduce my administrative assistant, who plays an integral role in our purchasing. And I would like to have her present tonight this value.
Thank you. Welcome.
And that's Sarah Sarkis. Sorry.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Sarah Sarkis, Administrative Analyst with the Police Department. Sorry, I did not get my PowerPoint up. So tonight, I will be presenting on a taser purchase for the police department. A quick overview, as I mentioned, the police department is requesting to upgrade its tasers to the latest model that would transition us from our current Taser X26 to the latest Taser 10. The total cost of the upgrade is $265,686.35. Quick background, in 2017, the department transitioned to the currently used Taser X26 model. At the time of that purchase, the Taser X26 was not the latest model offered by Taser. However, it was the most cost-effective option for the city. Unfortunately, the manufacturer is currently phasing out the X26 model that we have. This is creating challenges for staff and the acquisition of certain replacement parts and accessories. The two most critical being batteries and the probes that are deployed from the taser itself. So with that, the department is requesting to purchase 71 tasers. With the purchase of our 71 tasers, the manufacturer will be providing two for free because of the bulk order. This is just a bonus, and will increase the supply that we have. As a side note, the reason why we are specifically ordering 71, even though the department is allotted for 76 officers, that's due to having five administrative officers that do not carry tasers as part of their daily duty toolkit. So this is just a chart showing the functionality of our current taser compared to the taser that we are proposing to purchase. So one of it has to deal with the range capacity, the difference of our current one at 21 feet and the new one at 45 feet. The increased distance will enhance officer safety, also the safety of an individual that we come in contact with. This just increases the distance when officers are diffusing situations. Another component is the battery system. Our current taser has a fixed battery. So when that battery is at end of life, we are having to purchase more and physically replace that battery. The Taser 10 has a rechargeable battery that has a longer life shelf than the fixed batteries. The most critical component of these tasers is the actual probe deployment. Our current taser, once you deploy those probes, you have to reload in order to continue to discharge more probes. This could happen sometimes in the event that one of the two probes does not make contact with an individual. You have to have a circuit so that officer is having to reload in order to discharge more probes. In the Taser 10, that has 10 available probes. So if one does happen to not make contact with an individual, the officer is able to continuously discharge probes until those make contact. A small component, but something that's still important, is the Taser 10 comes equipped with a flashlight. Our current taser does not come equipped with a flashlight. This will just enhance our capabilities in dark spaces and at night. So it's just a quick visual to show you guys the difference of what our Taser X26, that's on the left, and the proposed Taser 10 is on the right. The major distinction is you'll see the Taser 10 is bulkier in the front. That's due to the 10 available probes. That's where they're housed. Versus our Taser X26 is skinnier because of the limited amount of probes that it can hold. So typically, for a purchase like this size, the city would have to put out a request for proposals to prospective bidders. However, the manufacturer, which is Axon, is the only manufacturer and supplier of the tasers. So this would be considered a sole source purchase. This purchase was part of the city's adopted budget this year. We initially had budgeted at the price point of our current Taser X26 and its closely related model as a Taser 7. So that's how we got to our $200,000 price point. Unfortunately, with the Taser X26 and the Taser 7 being phased out by the manufacturer, we are recommending that we purchase the Taser 10. There is an increase in price, and you'll see that at $65,686.35. So we will be requesting a budget amendment on top of the $50,000 that we've already budgeted from the general fund and the $150,000 that we've already budgeted from Measure K. Real quick, as a side note, as we talk about Measure K, Measure K was presented to and passed by the voters with the intention of providing additional funds to police and fire. Of one of those goals, a specific goal of Measure K was to upgrade and enhance police and fire equipment. This purchase does exactly that. It aligns with the purpose and desired outcomes of Measure K. And with that, recommendation for council tonight would be to adopt two resolutions. One being approving the purchase of 71 tasers from Axon Enterprises for $265,686.35. And to approve a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget to appropriate Measure K fund balance funds for the purchase of the tasers. Thank you, council. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues, any questions?
Yeah, sorry.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Sarah. The 71, that includes the two that are added, or that's 71?
That's 71 plus two, so we'd have 73 total.
In the budget, 71 is what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mina. So it's, I mean, I don't know the extent of cost of these things, but I'm assuming that's what they go for.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Just a couple of questions. First one is, does the Taser 10 fit your belt? Or is there an additional belt that will have to be purchased?
I don't, maybe Chief can answer this, but I don't believe the belt is different. It's the actual holster of the taser.
Perfect. Thank you. And how long will these last us? Do we have an estimated?
It's tough to say. I mean, in 2017, that's when we bought the X26s. So that's seven years. Then the company has decided to start phasing them out. So we could get another seven years. We could get more. It just kind of depends on the manufacturer, since they they hold a monopoly in the market. So we kind of have to go based on what they decide.
All right. With that, I open up public comment. I see none in the audience. Do we have any written or Zoom? City Clerk Gonzalez?
We have no one on Zoom here.
Thank you. I close public comment at this time, and I bring it back to my colleagues.
A motion to approve item D1 is written for the tasers.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Administrative Analyst Sarkis. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, council.
Item? Item D2, contract award for Fairgrounds Lift Station Modification, City Project SS-0006.
Thank you, City Clerk. And I think that's going to be presented by our Director of Engineering, if I'm not mistaken.
Good evening, Mayor. This is Ellen Bitter. Deputy City Engineer, I'll be presenting this item tonight, and I will share my screen. Okay, is the presentation visible?
Yes.
Great. So tonight, I'm presenting the award of the contract for the Fairground Lift Station Modifications, City Project SS-00006. Briefly, the Fairgrounds Lift Station is located in a fenced area on the south side of Cleveland Avenue, just east of Schnorr Avenue. And this lift station handles approximately 30% of the city's sewer flows. Here is a location map showing Cleveland Avenue, Schnorr Street. This hatched triangle or rectangle is the lift station. It's near, in line with the entry into the Walmart parking lot and that shopping center there. Or that's, it's in line with it, but it is on the south side of the street. And just to give you another perspective, it's in this fenced area with the landscaping near the Baskin Robbins Ice Cream Restaurant. So this lift station was constructed in the 1970s and rehabilitated in 1991. So it's similar to our other sewer infrastructure. It's hitting that magic date where they're reaching end of life for a lot of the components. Two condition assessments were completed, one in 2007 and one in 2018. And they both identified significant deficiencies in both the condition of the equipment and the operations at the lift station. So a project to improve the lift station has been included in the capital improvement program. It's ruled for several years, but we were able to move that forward with the assistance of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, allowing us to bring several infrastructure projects forward. And we hired AECom Technical Services as the engineering consultant through our on-call project to evaluate the site, conduct the preliminary engineering investigations, and ultimately prepare the construction plans for bidding. The scope of the work is to abandon the pit-style pumps and equipment. So staff will no longer need to get into the wet wells to pull the pumps. Everything can be maintained and addressed from above ground. And there are going to be three self-priming pumps. There's where the effluent comes into the channel. That is a concrete chamber that will need to be recoded to prevent any deterioration from the gases that we see occurring in our sewer facilities. There's going to be a replacement of the instrumentations that operate the pumps and some new piping for the station. There will be new electric control panels. Public Works has experienced a lot of downtime with the pumps shutting off, and so this should eliminate those issues. There will be a new generator on the site, and the site lighting will be relocated to accommodate the new equipment that's going in. We put the project out to bid in our Planet Bids, the website portal. And it was listed on October 3, and then we also advertised twice in the Madera Tribune. We received six bids on November 20. And the results are as follows, with Telstar Instruments being the lowest bidder at $1,902,200. And then the highest bid, I won't read them all, but was WM Lyles coming in at nearly $2.9 million. The engineer's opinion of the cost was $1,694,000. So the low bid, although it is higher than the engineer's estimate, it is within reason and reflective of some of the current increases in, of course, labor and equipment. The bids were reviewed to see if they were responsive and responsible. And as noted on a previous award, responsive means it meets all the requirements of the bid submission. And a responsible bidder is one who's able to satisfactorily perform the work. We evaluate their qualifications, experience, reputation, and their capacity and financial resources. Based on the review of their bids, Telstar Instruments submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid, and we recommend award of the contract to that firm. Additionally, our consultant AECom performed a preliminary environmental assessment for the project and determined that it qualifies for a categorical exemption, Class II, replacement or reconstruction per the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. So it's replacement or reconstructing an existing facility. It's not a new location or a new plant, and it's not providing new capacity to our system. So tonight, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution that would approve the contract for the Fairgrounds Lift Station in the amount of $1,902,200 to Telstar Instruments. We are requesting a contingency allowance of 10% of the contract amount and also to formally adopt the SEQA Class II categorical exemption, replacement or reconstruction for the project. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Engineer Bitter. Bringing it back to my colleagues, are there any questions?
I do have just one quick question, Mayor Gallegos. Ellen, because you're bringing this above ground, does that require some type of building to protect the station?
Yes, it will be in a fully enclosed building. It will have some acoustic treatment and also. and also protects it from the weather.
And I'm assuming that none of that will interfere with any of the nearby businesses?
The, the elevation of the building is similar to the structure that currently is over the control panel. It's about the same height as that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, this is the building that's by the Baskin Robbins on Cleveland, correct?
Yes, it's within that chain link fenced area.
Okay, yes, this is, I'm sorry. This is the building by, yeah, right there by the Baskin Robbins, correct? And what's the boot barn?
It's, it's near the boot barn. There is a driveway that separates them.
Right, right. Just giving a proximity to those that may very well be watching tonight. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. I open up for public comment. Anybody in the audience that would like to comment? I see none. I bring it back to my city clerk. Any Zoom or emails?
We have none, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve item D two.
Second.
Oh, I have a first and a tie. Let's take council member Viegas as a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again for that.
Thank you.
Report. Next item, city clerk?
And now on to item D three, approval of an agreement with Wordley for translation services. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening's item is approval of an agreement with Wordley for translation services. For some background, currently, the city provides translation services as needed depending on anticipated audience requirements. Workshops were held earlier this year on February twenty-first and September eighteenth, and we explored implementing two-way Spanish-English interpretation and extending our services to include Punjabi. At the October second council meeting, staff introduced Wordley as a potential artificial intelligence AI solution. Following a presentation, council voted to proceed with drafting an agreement for its services. After thorough research, excuse me, and vendor outreach, staff identified Wordley as the AI translation service provider that best meets the city's needs. Staff contacted Deepell and Three Play Media for quotes, however, they did not meet one of the requirements of supporting Punjabi language translation. And additionally, Wordley's services integrate seamlessly with the city's existing meeting structure, offering both audio and text-based translations accessible through personal devices and in-person displays. The proposed agreement with Wordley includes an annual cost of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for seventy hours of service. Given that translation services were not included in the fiscal year budget, this item also requires a budget amendment. It is worth noting that the city conducts approximately nineteen regular council meetings and five special city council meetings annually, totally approximately sixty hours. Staff will monitor the contract usage and return to council should additional hours be needed. The alternatives this evening, should council require additional information, analysis, or research, staff can provide further details on translation services, and those options are conducting additional research or data collection to address specific concerns, exploring alternative interpreting services, and/or continuing with the current in-person translation practices. Tonight's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the agreement with Wordley for the provision of AI power translation services at city council meetings, and to adopt a resolution approving the budget amendment for the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. That concludes this evening's report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, city clerk Gonzalez for that report. I bring it to my colleagues for any questions? I see none. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, mayor. Is it possible to integrate a way for users to be able to give feedback about the effectiveness of it?
To, as like, is in public comment, or to just address it?
Like cards, or some kind of way that they'll be able to let us know, is this effective for them, if they use it, once they use it?
I'm sure we can come up with something to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Mejia. Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Yes, and I think to address that, I think it's a great idea. Maybe our mayor, at the end of the meeting, especially when we're initiating this Wordley, be a great opportunity for her to state, hey, if this is, you're hearing this for the first time through Zoom, please give us your feedback on the, on the Wordley and tell us what your thoughts are. Because I think it is important to get feedback to see if it is being effective. I mean, from what we saw, it was very impressive. But again, to Councilwoman Mejia's point, I think it's important to get feedback to see if it is reaching those people that are having the hardest time really interpreting what we're saying.
Absolutely. I think that'll be part of, you know, we can keep that included in monitoring our contract for our usage of hours. I think that'd be good.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rodriguez. This time I open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience would like to speak? I see none. Do we have any Zoom or written comment?
We have none.
Thank you. I close public comment at that time and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Motion to approve D three as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to administrative reports, we have item E one, informational report on attendance of city board, commission, and committee members.
Thank you, city clerk Gonzalez. That will be presented by city manager Rodriguez.
Good evening, mayor, council members. If, can you give me a second? The item before council this evening is an informational item. And so there is no action being requested of council this evening. So earlier this evening, item B fifteen on consent, the city council approved a resolution to submit a roster of current commission and committee members pursuant to the Matty Act, and that's going to be submitted to the state by the end of the month. This item is simply an item, and it's the first time that we've brought it since I've been here for six years, that provides the city council with an attendance roster for calendar year twenty twenty-four of your appointments. And the key reason that we wanted to bring this forward is as the city council is considering making appointments, or sometimes council will hear that we did not have a meeting due to lack of quorum, I do think it would be appropriate so that council is made aware of when your, your committee members are attending. And, and so, again, this is simply an informational item for council's information. So historically, the city council has appointed individuals to serve on various boards in various capacities. Sometimes these are, these boards or commissions make recommendations to the city, or sometimes they do take action. However, sometimes it's challenging if, if there's a lack of quorum. And so sometimes items do get postponed, not often, but sometimes. Some of them are, 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 do have some, some quasi judicial authority, such as the planning commission, and then obviously the civil service board is extremely important because that has a direct impact on city operations, because that's the board where applicants, where applications are considered for potential hiring. And so if we do not have a quorum, then obviously it makes it a lot more difficult for us to hire people that are actively looking for a job. So we currently have multiple boards. We have the civil service commission, the ADA committee, the planning commission, the airport advisory commission, the community block grant commission, the golf course advisory commission, the transit advisory board. We also have a couple of boards that are currently not active. At some point, I, I do think it would be worthwhile to have a discussion in front of this council. That does not have to be tonight. However, I, I do think it would be appropriate for us to bring it back sooner rather than later, and that's the youth commission. The youth commission is codified in the Madera municipal code. The ULI group took over the youth commission a number of years ago, and I don't really have a really sound understanding as to when that transition occurred, but, but there's not a youth commission right now, but there is a youth commission through ULI. There's a beautification committee, and I, I'm not, my understanding is that there was some changeover at the park staff, and for some reason, that committee stopped a meeting. And then there's the loan review committee, which has not met, and some of that's due to lack of inactivity. Sometimes finding applicants to apply is a little challenging. And then also, I also do think that it would be appropriate for the council to, to take a look at if, if, if these boards and commissions still meet the needs of the city, and if they're still required. Obviously, it's, it's easy to add boards and commissions. However, I, my only caution to any group would be is that there is a significant amount of staff time dedicated to, to providing information to these boards and commissions, and then also the follow-up to that. So while it's easy to say, oh, we'll just add a commission, that's great, but just simply, I think it's, I would be remiss if I did not advise council that there is a cost directly associated with it. Commission members are not compensated, so there is no pay. So that's never the issue. It's just staff time. With that being said, city staff, the city does pay for trainings. For example, the planning commission is eligible to attend a League of California conference, or, I'm sorry, by the American Planning Association. And, and, and those are typically held at common conference areas such as Sacramento, Monterey, Long Beach, or Anaheim, or slash Irvine. And, and so there is a cost associated with that. But again, they are doing city business. There was also a typo in the staff report that I did want to address. On the airport advisory commission, there was an alignment error with, with how they were aligned. It does not impact the individual attendance. It was simply the districts. I think we had the mayor was flip-flopped, and there's currently a vacancy for district five, but, but their attendance was accurate. It was just in terms of where it was aligned. So again, there's no direct impact. This is an informational report. I'm not going to walk through council through all the tables because they're included in the staff report. I simply wanted to present this so council was made aware in terms of why you're receiving this report, given it's the first time that council has seen it. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Any comments? Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gagels, and thank you again, city manager Rodriguez, for providing that report alongside the, the, like, the times that, that these committees don't have a quorum because of, or don't have a meeting because of lack of quorum, right? But, you know, it's good to see, because this way it gives me, as a council member, especially if I have someone appointed, what's taking place with these committees, right? I sit on one of them. Obviously, I sit on the advisory for the golf course, and looking at the, the amount of times that we've met, you know, you could see that there are several absences there. But nevertheless, I think we still meet some quorum. There are times that we don't. But when I look at the airport advisory, for, for example, and I think this is what brought the, the need to bring this back so that we can look at it, is that you've had quite a few absences, and I think you highlighted that the airport advisory committee has not been able to establish a quorum since January of twenty twenty-two. Again, the airport is a big asset to the city, so I think it's important for us to really consider of what kind of advisory committee is, is coming before us and presenting any report. You know, obviously, we expect that from your, your golf course advisory, your ADA, certain civil service, you know, we, we expect that because we want to hear from them. We're not at every single meeting looking at every single asset that the city owns, but, or, or the business of the city, but this is how we engage, by having someone that we appoint to that. But as of late, it looks like that, that's pretty daunting that we don't have a quorum as of twenty twenty-two. I mean, that's over a two-year period that we haven't received any, any reports regarding the airport. And, and as a, someone that, you obviously looks at, at the city's assets, I think it's important that we have someone there that has some knowledge of what's taking place so that they can come back and report to. We, we expect that from EDC. We expect that from all these other committees and/or commission boards, and this should be no exception. So I, I wanted our, our council to see and, and look at what's, what's taking place with some of these commissions, and, and maybe, maybe assess whether or not what we have going now, do we have to go back and open up? Do we want to select an individual person from our council? Or do we want to have someone that has that knowledge within that, that type of field? You know, obviously with, with the airport, you want to have someone that, that understands, that has a vested interest in there as well. And, I mean, we don't want it to sway, but they're only advisory. They're not going to make any decisions that we wouldn't, that wouldn't be brought to the council. We give ultimate direction where that goes. It's no different with the golf course advisory. So I hope that my colleagues can look at those charts that you provided, and, I mean, to me, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it's right that we, we have these advisories, but yet we, we lack quorum, and, and we haven't had any reports been brought to us. So maybe a different method of, of maybe selecting these folks that may want to engage more in these, in these committees and/or commissions. And those are my comments. Commissioner, I mean commissioner, sorry, Mayor Gagels.
No worries, Mayor Protim Rodriguez. And with that, I open up to public comment. Anybody in the audience? I see none? Online or Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
Thank you. With that, I close public comment. That's an informational item only. Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. Next item?
And on to item E two, seek direction regarding the regular city council meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much, mayor, council members. The item before council this evening is the agenda, it's, it's the city council, a meeting calendar for next calendar year, which starts here in a couple of weeks. As council's aware, this is the last meeting of the year, and city staff took a harder look at next year. And the main reason for this is we're trying to plan for both city resources and at the same time to make sure that the, that staff is aware of any potential conflicts that the council may have. With that being said, historically, the city council meets the first and the third Wednesday of the month. The city council, as the housing authority board, meets the second Wednesday of the month. So council typically meets three consecutive weeks out of the month. And then oftentimes, or sometimes, we will have special city council meetings specifically during budget and the capital improvement program, or other times as the need arises. Waiting for my mouse here. So a couple of things we took a look at during calendar year twenty twenty-five. The first meeting would fall on January the fifteenth. I do have a slide, a next couple of slides that are, that are going to show the full calendar year, but a couple of things that we did look at. There are three League of California city conferences in twenty twenty-five, the first one being January. The January meeting, there are two conferences. There is one in Sacramento. There's another one in Garden Grove, January twenty-second through the twenty-third. And I believe that, for some reason, I thought that was the twenty-fourth, but that one is in Sacramento. So the dates that are shown on the screen are for the Sacramento meeting. There's a city, there's a city leaders summit in April. There's the annual conference in October. We also took a look at the holidays, and then we also took a look at the high school graduations with three high schools. There are three consecutive days of graduations, June third, third, fourth, and the fifth. I'm looking at the date. I think the continuation school is also listed as well. We also took a look at when Madera Unified goes back to school, which is August the seventh. And, and then potentially, something we've looked at in the past is if there is a city council election. Obviously, this year, we're not too sure. However, hypothetically, if, if, if the district one seat is not filled, the special election would be November the twenty-fifth. And as we're going through the screen, I'm going to see if I can kind of move this over a little bit. All right. So January is on the upper left-hand corner. January first would traditionally be our very first city council meeting, but that's New Year's Day, and that's why it's, it's, it's crossed off. The first meeting in January would be January the fifteenth. The red squares identify the League of California Cities Conference, so the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. One thing to note is that there are five Wednesdays in January. The reason I bring that up is The reason I bring that up is earlier this evening, the city council discussed appointing someone to district one. Shannon and I were speaking um, and that that is a potential date if needed. Because the submittal would have to occur by February 2nd, which is a Sunday. For February, there are two meetings scheduled, the 5th and the 19th were marked. There are two as well, the 5th and the 19th with no conflicts. On, for the month of April, April uh, 2nd and April the 16th, identified uh, the 23rd, the 24th, and the 25th is a conference. For May, there are two meetings, the 7th and the 21st, no, no apparent conflicts that staff could identify. Um, on June, there, there are, there are two normally scheduled dates, the 4th and the 18th. There, there is a graduation in Madera on June the 4th, and I wouldn't be able to tell you which high school it is, but there is a graduation. In this current calendar year, the city council elected to have a meeting. Obviously, if the city council decides to cancel the meeting on the 4th, city staff is completely open to it. It's at the discretion of the city council. On July, uh, there are two meetings. Uh, there are no conflicts with July 4th, so the meetings would be July the 2nd and July the 16th. In August, there, there traditionally would be meeting August the 6th and August the 20th. City staff is recommending that we cancel the meeting on August the 6th. The primary reason for that is the first day of school is August the 7th, which is the following day. That, that makes it very difficult for council, the community, and, and city staff. If you're attempting to prepare, if you have any um, children, they're going to be starting school the next morning. For some reason, the night before always appears somewhat chaotic, at least in the Rodriguez household. Um, and so it also allows city staff an opportunity to take a vacation. And at the same time, city council to take a vacation the week prior, because the time leading up to it can, can be somewhat challenging trying to get uh, council reports out. So one of the things that we were attempting to do was take a hard look at it to provide city staff an opportunity to take a vacation prior to school, going back to session. September, September the 3rd and the 17th, October would be the 1st and the 15th with the conference. In the middle there, on the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th, in November, there is currently I'm not too sure whether the word discussion comes out right there. I think you can ignore that. I'm no idea why that's there. Um, and then in November, right now, we do have November the 5th and the 19th. Historically, for the past couple of years, if there's been an election on November the 4th, we have canceled the meeting on November the 5th, and that's for obvious reasons. One of them being is a lot of people stay up very late on the 4th to follow the election results, or maybe there's someone in the election. When you come back the following day, it can be somewhat difficult. On top of that, with heavy agenda packets, it's, it's difficult to allow council members an opportunity to digest all the information while they're in campaign mode. And then on, on December, we have December the, the 3rd, and then December the 17th. So again, um, city staff this evening is looking for direction, while knowing that if something changes in the next couple of months, this, this calendar is not set in stone, and it can always be modified. But again, one thing that we're trying to do is simply try and allow council and the community and city staff an opportunity to plan their year for next year, especially if they have vacations or if they have major deadlines. This simply provides for that. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any questions from my colleagues? If not, I open it up for public comment. I see no one in the audience. City Clerk Gonzalez, do we have any written or um, Zoom?
We have none.
Thank you. Bring it back to council, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I'm in agreeance with the fact that having children is a lot. And for the staff to have to try to get ready for school the next day, I, I'm in agreeance to having um, canceled the meeting. If we have to reschedule, have to have a special meeting, then we can do so as well. So for June and for when, when does school start back again?
August, August the 7th.
Okay, so we're okay for August the 7th, but especially for June with graduation and things of that nature. I'm in agreeance with, with um, staff having that day off as well. And there was another day that you spoke on, or no?
Um, so June 4th is currently shown as a meeting date, and the reason council staff put that in there is because uh, last year, uh, council had, um, had wanted to keep it. But obviously, it's at the discretion of council. If council says, yeah, we want it in graduations, obviously, we can cancel it. And then August the 6th, we would recommend not having it because the first day of school is the following morning.
And then also November the 5th, if in fact we do go into an election, I'm in agreeance as well in not having it then. And if we need to come back, even though it's the day after, the day before Thanksgiving, if, if necessary, we could come back then. But for me personally, even though I don't have a horse in the race, I don't have any children at home, I'm in, in agreeance to that because I know what it's, it's like to have to deal with children, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Um, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Um, just to, just to clarify that, June 4th date, um, that's the graduation night for Madera High School.
It looks like everybody else is good. So you have direction that June 4th will come off? And what was the other recommendation?
August the 6th.
August the 6th? That's already not highlighted?
Yeah, and if council um, decides to have an election on November the 4th to fill council district one, that's it, then November the 5th would also come off.
Okay.
Now, are we making, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Are you making that contingent upon us moving that route? Because if we're not, then.
Can we can simply leave it right now, and if council's okay with it, we can um, we can always bring an item back later. And later on, Feb- February, January, I mean, February or March or something along those lines, if that's okay by council. I wouldn't want anyone to have any preconceived notions in terms of what direction council is going to take.
Thank you. All right, City Manager Rodriguez, you have direction?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved to initiate new matters and to request updates and to initiate new agenda items. No single item may exceed one minute. All votes shall be conducted electronically with results announced by the chair. If voting is not available by electronic methods, another method may be used by the chair unless otherwise determined by the majority of the council members present. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I bring it back to my colleagues with any questions. I have one. Um, if they would entertain uh, bringing it back to council for future dinner items to go back to just council and communication reports and announcements.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have four yeses, five, one, two, three, four, five, six. It's unanimous. Have them all. Thank you so much. With that, I have um, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gago. So I know the item before us on E one was just informational. Didn't really give us any direction or what have you. But uh, if, if this council would so desire to bring it back and maybe give direction as to how we want to pursue these um, committees that are not being attended to, I, I, I think that would be a good idea. And I say this only because through the agreement that we had with Sierra Golf Management, the grand jury pointed that out, and not having an advisory committee for the golf course as instructed through our, through our um, contracted agreement brought a really big, um, they pointed that out for us. So we had to create that, um, what was it, uh, 13 years later? And I, I'm, I'm just hoping that um, we address some of those vacancies and, and sooner than later, and not let it just sleep until some action is taken by an outside group or possibly um, even a grand jury. So I'm not sure if this council would have that appetite to bring it back, but really to try to narrow it down and say, hey, do we want to pursue these? Do we want to close these out? Or maybe look at the, maybe changing the dates, maybe every month isn't uh, advisable for these folks that are doing it voluntarily. But you know, we have to have some type of direction so that we, we just don't leave it there. So we can bring it back for information three, four years down the road.
Thank you, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. With that, um, we will bring it back. We have uh, six of, oh, unanimously now is um, going to bring it back. As soon as staff has uh, time on the calendar, because I know we have other items that we also put forth.
Thank you. Appreciate that, counsel.
Yeah, no, okay. With that, I will um, move on to the next item.
Item G, councilmember communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies, and at all public events, and to make announcements.
Thank you, City Clerk. We'll start with Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you so very much. Merry Christmas, everyone. God bless. If you're free on Sunday, the extravaganza is open. Right now, we have a hundred and four guests. So if you plan on attending, I will see you there. And if not, God bless and Merry Christmas. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez.
Hopefully, everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia.
I have nothing to report.
Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, uh, this week I had an opportunity to meet with the uh, golf course advisory. We kind of went over some of the uh, some of the improvements that have taken place. I think uh, I reported to you there. We've also wanted to create a priority, um, kind of what we do here for capital improvement projects of what those priorities look, um, look like uh, moving into 2025. I know that currently we're, we're utilizing the capital improvement fund that was designated for the 24, 25 fiscal year. But we're going to uh, continue to bring back, uh, I think the course is in need of um, you know, maybe a better irrigation, and especially more so the central system where the, the irrigation system um, reports to, right? This is a 30-year-old, if not older, system. And I think it's kind of wearing down to where there's inefficiency in the way we irrigate that. So something that we may bring back, those are capital improvements that, of course, uh, with council direction, we'll bring back here. And if it's, if approved, then we'll move forward to make those uh, improvements there. As far as the um, uh, we've kind of moved away from the priorities there, which were, you know, the HVAC, some of the uh, restrooms and, and other flooring, uh, safety doors and what have you. And we're starting to concentrate now again on, on the uh, the improvements that, that the course requires through the USGA report that was done. So with that, hopefully I bring back that to you guys in upcoming meeting. I also had an opportunity to attend our LAFCO meeting where we uh, approved an annexation for some lots that are out by uh, Adele and Ellis. Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, and it looks for, there's some development going out that way, but the city was uh, in support of it. So uh, we went ahead and, and approved that. We hope to see uh, some units and more, uh, hopefully affordable housing there come through. It's much needed through our community. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Iegus.
Thank you, Mayor Cesar Iegus. I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody here, the police department, our, our city attorney, our city manager, everybody. Have a good time and don't drink and drive.
Thank you. And I just have a few things, and I'll do it in 60 seconds. I would like to welcome in our PD new hires, six officers, three dispatchers, and one records clerk. We also need to congratulate Barbara Leach is now our new CEO of Madera District Fair, so woo-hoo for her. I think the park staff and our city staff are doing the Jolly Holly tour. We had about 100 people, 150 people come off buses, and about 80 visited the Jolly Holly Tour stop at my house. So thank you for that. I also attended Cookie with the Cop with our officers, and we had a donation of beautiful pajamas for our kids. Over 500, I think it was, so they, 1,000, they got cookies, and they got picture with Santa, and they talked to the officers and got pajamas. So thank you for that. I would like to, behalf of the um, council and myself, wish our staff uh, very safe and happy holiday, and enjoy your time with your family. And it is precious moments that we always don't get because we're always in a hustle and a bustle. So with that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody. And I adjourn this meeting at this time, and we will see you on January 15th. Good night, everyone.